Roll call.
Chris McBride.
Here.
Chris Marcus.
Here.
Trustee D. Sokum. Vice President McAvoy.
I'm here.
President Lawson.
I'm here. So, thank you, everyone. Welcome to our August 12th already, first school board meeting of the 2020-21 school year. I've posted the links to the agenda and the speaker cards in the chat box, and I'll copy those again over for those of you who are just joining. And I also put information for the Spanish translation into the chat box. If you would like to speak to the board, please do fill out the Google Doc and include your name so that we know who to unmute when the time comes. Let's see, if the item you wish to address is not on the agenda, you'll be called on during oral communication. And due to the Brown Act, the board is allowed to hear your comments, but we cannot have a discussion on it. If the item you wish to address is on the agenda, you'll be called on when that item is being addressed. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. And just a reminder that because we are meeting via teleconference, all votes will be by roll call. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
So I was
There are, go ahead. There are those changes that were made that we sent an email out in regard to, I think it was LE 10.4
10.4 through 10.7 will be pulled to come back to our next regular meeting.
Yes, please.
Yeah, so I was wondering, I don't know if they need to stay on action or if they can move to consent, but I was looking at 11.3, 4, 5, 6, and 7. Some of those have to do with teacher being a provisional internship and things. I don't know if those need to stay action or if they can move to consent.
I believe the provisional internship permit needs to stay on action.
Okay.
And the variable term waiver request also.
Okay.
The others on here, 11.6, 11.7, and 11.8 do not.
Well, 11.8 is a resolution, so I think that might
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. You're right. You didn't say 11.8. You didn't say, I thought, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So that's
So I think it's just 11.6 and 11.7. I don't know if people have comments on those. It's the RCTA language about the subs, substitute teachers, and then the National Urban Alliance.
I'm fine moving this to consent.
I'm fine.
Lynda, did you have anything that you needed to tell us about in UA? Okay, I figured we'll be getting an update at some point, so, okay.
You, yep, you are.
Okay, so we're moving 11.6 and 11.7 to consent. Anything else? Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I moved.
Lisa?
Second, Dennis. Make it peaceful, Syria.
And can we have a roll call vote, please?
Chris McBride.
Aye.
Chris Marcus.
Aye.
Trustee D. Sokum. Vice President McAvoy.
Aye.
President Lawson.
Aye, sorry, I was just looking at some comment cards that just came in. I believe that so Ms. B has a comment on, I think, School of Choice. So that would be under oral communication. So if we can bring up Pam Bearish, all the other cards are for later on in the agenda. And a reminder for the three minutes, I do have my timer. I can share. Figure out, how do I screen share again?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, hang on just a minute. All right. Go ahead, Ms. B.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for giving me a couple minutes of your time. As you know, the teachers in Redwood City started today with our additional three days of staff development and professional development before school starts. It is a stressful time of year. As you can always understand, it is at the beginning of the school year. Add to that distance learning, and we are over the top, overworked, overstressed. One of the things that is making me even more stressed these days, and I am not the only teacher in Redwood City affected by this, is that we were assured, I don't even remember which school board meeting it was, that all School of Choice movement would be completed well before school started, and there would be no movement happening once school started. As of yesterday, my kindergarten team lost 13 kids from our school to other schools. And at the same time, other kids are coming into our school, and we are not done yet. It is extremely stressful and counterproductive for us to be even more stressed out than we are to have to deal with this kindergarten shuffle, which is happening at all grade levels at all schools. And I would ask Dr. Baker and the school board to please, please, please assure your teachers in Redwood City so we could have as smooth of a transition as possible, that whatever this madness is of School of Choice movement, it will be said, done, and over with by Friday, so next week we can really focus on the job at hand, which is teaching. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ms. B. I'm missing my cursor. Here we are. Okay, so I think we could have called that under the distance learning. Maybe Dr. Baker can address that later.
Yeah, I think that would be good to cover later, just to have that conversation.
We talked about that at length during the hybrid, during the hybrid model, if you recall, but I'll refer to it when we get to the COVID-19.
Okay. And that's where we're at, right? Oh, no, sorry, we're on 6.1. We are on the bond program.
All right, you guys can hear me?
Basically.
Will, you may need to turn up your volume a little bit.
Okay. Are you guys able to see, are you guys able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. And so we shared this progress tracking matrix before we broke for summer, and the items highlighted in yellow are the changes since the start of summer. And so we have begun construction at the Clifford School site. We have just recently begun construction at the Garfield School site. We've received DSA certification letters for McKinley, North Star, and the 815 Allerton Street site formerly known as Orion. And just this week, received approval on our last legacy project that was holding up the new plan set, Roy Cloud. And we're expecting the DSA approval and stamp plans this week. And as you can see, at the start of the program, this was all white. And now, almost four years in, you can see that everything is almost grayed out. It's really exciting. The summer was very eventful. There we go. Does anyone have any questions on this progress tracking matrix? Okay. Sorry, what was that?
Oh, I was just wondering if you could send us a copy of this after. Yeah, thank you. Great progress.
And I have a construction progress photo update. Diving right in. So here is Henry Ford School. You can see the whole new front parking lot, entryway to
Well, can't see it.
Can't see it.
Can't see it, okay. How about there?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry about that. And so this is the first slide, Henry Ford School. And so as you can see, the front parking lot area drop off, new entrance to the administration, and the new entrance to the library area is complete. This is the backside of Henry Ford School, and so you can see we did a new slurry coat, and this little white box is the external walk-in freezer. This is another view of the library at the front of the school. See, we just recently completed the slurry coat and the fresh paint. Here's another angle of the external walk-in freezer. Moving on to the Kennedy
I want to add something on that, go back on that freezer. So the freezer does get a complete fencer on that freezer, so it will be secure.
Thanks, Dawn. Moving on to Kennedy School, here's a completed renovated science lab. New paint in progress. Moving on to Roosevelt School. You can see the lunch shelter structure is completed. Another angle. A new ADA ramp, walkway. And renovation of boys and girls restrooms in progress. Moving on to Anamonte Selby School. All of this trenching is for the drainage upgrades project and bioswell. And this is the new admin front entrance. Interior. Half-school grading is still in progress. So this is the location where the new two-story classroom built. The new parking lot will be. Trenching and conduit in progress, as well as new exterior paint. Jumping to Hoover School. Here's an interesting angle of the new gym. And then a couple interior angles. You can see the roofing's going on, and one of the external spaces in progress. Moving on to Clifford School. So this is the exterior learning corp. Orion Alternative School. So this is before demo. You can see this large piece of machinery, ready to eat this first building up. We have, we have a pretty cool video of the first chomp into this, into this building. Maybe I'll show that during my next update. Demolition in progress. Clearing out of the debris. And then excavation and grading in progress. And that's my last slide. Does anyone have any questions? All righty, thank you.
Thanks, Will. It's great to see all the progress that's been made on these projects. Exciting.
It's an exciting summer.
Okay, there's no questions for Will. We can move on to the report from Redwood City Education Foundation. Kyle, Jason, Galasides is in the audience, if you want to bring him up.
Hi, everyone. Can we show my video? Is that possible? And have the ability to share my screen?
I would need to move you over, Jason, so hang on a second.
No worries. Well.
So.
Thank you all for giving me this opportunity to speak to you. This is a very, oh, there we are. Hi. This is a, one quick second, please, as I pull this up. Great. Well, again, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to come in today and share a little bit about the work of the Redwood City Education Foundation. For those who don't know me, my name's Jason Galasides. I'm the interim executive director of the Redwood City Education Foundation. I'm a product of the Redwood City School District myself, and so it's really a pleasure to go in to work every day and give back to the school district that helped, you know, shape me in such a profound way. And this is a very difficult time to be an administrator, to be a staffer, a teacher, to be a trustee. And so I just want to thank you all for the work that you're doing to help support our students. So today, we're going to talk a little bit about RCF as a whole. We had initially wanted to talk about the Back to School Campaign, but we brought into it a little bit to give sort of an overview of our work, both in the past and moving forward. And so in this presentation, I'll give you a brief overview about RCF and some of our history. We'll talk about our recent history and some of our most recent highlights from our work. We'll talk about our new theory of change, which is a strategic blueprint to guide our organization and how to achieve its mission. We'll talk about our current work, the Back to School Campaign, which is currently underway, and have a very exciting announcement to make on that front, which you'll all be the first here after our board. And finally, we'll close with a look ahead at what this year is going to look like from the standpoint of the Education Foundation. So RCF was founded back, oh, I'm sorry, can you all, one second. There we go, that's better. Okay. So RCF was founded in 1983 by a group of concerned parents who were worried about enrichment programs being cut in the wake of the Prop 13 tax cuts. So the group of parents got together, they fundraised, and saved many of the enrichment programs, and that was long the charge of our organization. So we've been around ever since and have had many twists and turns along the way. And most recently, have started to really move towards an era of professionalization. We used to be a volunteer-driven board, and now obviously have a full-time executive director. And really, that's about, you know, growing our impact, and I think that's sort of the long-term history of Redwood City Education Foundation. Our mission is to improve the academic performance of underserved students. For those of you who have been familiar with RCF's work, this is slightly different than what our mission has been in the past. And later in this presentation, I'll walk you through what precipitated that change and a little bit more about that process. Our board is comprised of a number of community residents. The vast majority of them are parents, but they come from quite a number of very strong professional backgrounds and learn so much to our organization. You know, as we all know, it's hard enough to make sure that your own child has what he or she needs in school, but these parents go above and beyond to make sure that other, other students and other, other parents' children can have access to the same support. So we're very pleased to have an incredibly talented board who is very dedicated. Our funders are very numerous. These are just on the corporate side, and you'll, you'll see a lot of familiar names there, but we are deeply grateful to, to the companies, local and otherwise, who continue to support us. But a growing share of our revenue is really coming from the community, and so we'd be remiss not to acknowledge the hundreds of community members who donate to RCF every year. So we're really grateful, grateful to you all. We'll talk about what the recent history had for RCF. This past year has been a year of transition. I, I have been in this role for a year and some change now, and it has been a transformative year for our organization. And we'll talk a little bit about that. But, you know, this year began, like many others, with May's Days. We loved visiting the school sites and getting to meet some of you and, you know, really just see the school sites for ourselves and interact with parents and as administrators. And right after the school year began, we launched into efforts to approve Measure H. So Measure H is, as you all remember, was the parcel tax measure that would have brought millions of dollars into the district. And, you know, RCF had worked very early on with the district to see whether this was feasible. And we had initially sponsored the poll that was part of the feasibility assessment to determine whether it was possible to even pass a parcel tax. And, and once we got the poll back, you know, we worked very hard at convening a group of parents to serve as a committee, a campaign committee. So we had really a record number of committee members. We had about 25 parents who just worked week after week until November of 2019 to get this done. And you know, this committee raised $125,000, which is inclusive of a $25,000 contribution that RCF directly made. We mobilized over 200 volunteers. We held 31 phone banks, at which we called 12,000 voters, and we knocked on the doors of 9,000 voters in the district. And so it was an incredibly robust effort, and even though we were just a few dozen votes short of getting the votes, getting the votes that we needed to get this passed, really, I think the big silver lining and takeaway is that we saw so many new parents, parent leaders emerge and really step into new roles, and that was really exciting to see. And I know that the energy from Measure H to really support our district has continued ever since. Music for Minors has always been a cornerstone of our work, and in past years, we've been able to provide music education to all K through 5 students in 184 classes, which is approximately 5,500 students served through this program. It's been, of course, a tremendous program and really rounds out the educational experience for our students. You know, obviously, we had to, this is not continuing in this, in this current school year. But, but we will see what the future holds for the program as, as things start to revive. But we are very grateful to the support of the Civic Cultural Commission from the city of Redwood City for supporting this program for many, many years. We've also provided Chromebooks, and so one of the big initiatives that we did was to purchase $50,000 worth of Chromebooks, and this was made possible through a grant from the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative. And, you know, when, when COVID hit, a lot of the concern that I know we've all been hearing is, do the students have the hardware to be able to participate fully in, in distance learning? And certainly, we have a ways to go, but, but having the Chromebooks has been a major, major piece of the district, of the distance learning puzzle. So then we, we got into the COVID Relief Fund. We, we had just come off of Measure H. We were, we had an end-of-the-year appeal. We did a restaurant week. And, and then COVID hit, and everything changed, as we all know. And, you know, just hours after the district announced that we would not be returning in person in March, we announced our campaign because we knew that many of our families in the district were going to be severely, severely impacted by this crisis, not just from a health standpoint, but from a financial standpoint as well. We knew that many of our, there, we have many families who are service workers or in the restaurant or tourism hospitality industry who are significantly impacted. And we're worried about the kids because we had to ask ourselves, you know, can a child truly learn to the fullest extent that that is possible for them if they're worried about whether there will be a roof over their head the next day or food on the table? And so we felt this was a critical measure to secure the, the, you know, the very essentials that everyone needs to survive, shelter. And so we raised, in the end, in the end of 186, Redwood City School District families have received rental assistance, and that will continue. That will continue to, that number will continue to grow. And that was done through the Fair Oaks Community Center, which is a city agency. And 550 families received gift cards for basic essentials like groceries, medicine, gas, et cetera. And that was done through a partnership with the Community Schools Program. So we're very grateful for that partnership, and in all in all, we are able to raise $450,000 from over 840 donors. So we were just simply blown away by the community response. And what it really showed us is that our community cares. Our community cares about making sure that kids have what they need to succeed. And so that was, it was a bright spot in an otherwise very difficult time, and it definitely gives me hope, you know, moving forward. As soon as we wrapped up the COVID Relief Fund, and this was a couple of months ago, we started pivoting our focus to what this current, this upcoming school year was going to look like. And one of the areas of focus that we thought was absolutely critical for us to focus in on was mental health, student mental health and emotional well-being. As one of the principals told me, you know, our community just went through something extremely traumatic, and some of our students have been facing, you know, just really very scary circumstances in which their financial situations were very tenuous. And, and so we really wanted to make sure that there were enough caring adults to be checking in with the kids, making sure they're doing okay, but also working with the families as well to make sure that they're, they can support their student from home. And so we started by launching a pilot program at Garfield. And we will be providing 30 hours a week of counseling through One Life Counseling. And we decided to start with Garfield because it's a school with very high needs. 92% of students are eligible for free and reduced-priced meals. 60% are English learners, and so certainly, our goal is to expand mental health and social emotional learning. And so this is really our starting point for, for really investing in social emotional learning and mental health. And we're very grateful to some of our major donors who helped make this possible. So we had, we enjoyed a lot of successes, and we did, we did have a very strong year from a fundraising standpoint. All of this was in spite of some very major setbacks due to COVID. So we had three event cancellations that, you know, and certainly revenue that we're missing now. We had our annual fundraiser that was scheduled for March at CZI canceled, which we were really disappointed about, of course. We were working on putting together a benefit concert with a Google employee orchestra that had to be canceled as well. And of course, one of our signature annual events, the parade run, was canceled. And all in all, we think we lost about $185,000 in potential revenue. And so that, that's been a big hit to us. This year would have been even more successful had we been able to have those events, but you know, unfortunately, it's, it's a consequence of this pandemic. But all in all, like I said, we did have a very successful year. Our total revenues were $854,000. Our total administrative and development costs, basically everything that's not related to direct program expenses, were $196,000. And our programmatic contribution overall was $713,000. So this is, this is a record for us. We are raising more than we have in the past. We're spending less on administrative overhead, which means that we're able to give ultimately more to the community and to the students, which we're very thrilled about. We think it's good progress in the right direction. So now I want to talk about the theory of change. This is, this could have been put under the recent history bucket, but it's such, but it's such an important shift that I thought it merited really its own section. So what is a theory of change? A theory of change is essentially an organization's impact strategy, or really a blueprint for how it plans to achieve its mission and remain accountable for achieving specific outcomes. So this is a graphic of our theory of change, and I won't, you know, walk you through the details now, but you know, the big takeaway for us, again, it was the shift in the mission, which is to improve the academic performance of underserved students. That is now really our guiding metric, and we have aligned all of our programmatic investments under And we have aligned all of our programmatic investments under, under that, you know, in such a ways to advance that overall goal. So what was the process of going through this theory of change? It was really a two-part process. The first was a discovery process, which is really about listening and learning from the community. And the second was articulation, which is taking all of that feedback and creating that. The discovery process was fascinating for us. We interviewed over 30 stakeholders from the Redwood City School District community, including trustees, principals, teachers, parents, you know, folks from the city of Redwood City. And we asked them questions about RCF's impact, our brand, our reputation, our strategic direction, and really asking the tough questions about our value add to the community. And we had a few key findings. First is that, you know, people express that partnerships at various levels and sectors is absolutely essential. So that doesn't just mean, you know, with the private sector, that means, you know, with the district itself, with the PTOs, with companies, with other public agencies like the city. Another finding was that there needs to be a strong, but we, there's a strong need to more clearly define the intended impact of our CEF and clarify how we can bring a measurable impact to the district. And that's a lot of what the theory of change itself tackled. And finally, you know, the, a third finding, which, which really stuck out to us was that our CEF should be addressing the issue of equity directly and being a leading voice in, in directing resources to the area of greatest need within the district. So once we received all of that rich information from members of the community, we held three full day workshops. And those workshops had these primary goals of defining our mission statement, defining our target population more clearly. Thirdly, identifying the areas of intervention that we want to steer our, steer our investments. And finally, identifying the intended outcome of those interventions. So we started with the mission. And I mentioned before, we have a new mission. So our previous mission was to advance and enrich education opportunities for all students in the Redwood City School District. We felt that this did not, you know, after really reviewing and listening to the feedback, we felt it was a little vague and didn't give a clear enough signal to the community exactly what we are hoping to achieve as an organization. And so our new mission of improving the academic performance of underserved students, you'll see the differences between the two. So instead of advance and enrich education opportunities, it's to improve academic performance. Improve academic performance. And, and shifting from all students in the Redwood City School District to focusing on underserved students specifically. Now why focus? So, so before, so I can understand that this is something, this could be a point of contention or it could be something that people have differing opinions about. And we completely recognize and appreciate that. Every, every child, of course, is deserving of a fantastic education. But we, at the same time, acknowledge that there are very vast differences in the resources, not, not necessarily just those provided by the district, but those that are coming, you know, being provided at home from private PTOs, but also in the outcomes, in the academic outcomes for certain students. And if we wanted to be the most effective with our dollars, we wanted to direct those to where we felt we could get the strongest. And so by focusing our resources in such a way, we're no longer, what I like to say, going in a mile wide. We're really going deep and demonstrating impact. Now, now, of course, we want to be a good district for everyone. And so as we continue to grow as an organization, we will continue to, to expand the, the services that we serve. But given that our resources are still constrained relative to other funds, we're starting with underserved students very specifically. So how do we define underserved students? Well, there are a number of different ways that people can look at it. We could define it as free and reduced price eligibility, meal, free and reduced price meal eligibility. We can define it as homeless students or housing insecure students. We define as recent immigrants. We can define that as English learners. We could define this as students with special needs. But the metric or the definition that we landed on was free and reduced price meal eligibility. Because that is a pretty, it's a broad net that could capture some of these other groups and not limit us necessarily. And so, and it also, again, speaks very specifically to the issue of resource constraint, which as a fundraising organization, we have a very particular role to play. Great. So when I say improve the academic performance of underserved students, what does that mean? How do we measure it? Well, we have decided to measure that through high school readiness or defined as the percentage of students who enter high school at remedial levels. So we really want, our overarching goal is that students can enter high school prepared, that they can start off on the right foot and not, not already start behind. And so we looked at what are some of the factors that affect high school readiness? And that would help shape our intervention. And the two factors that we zeroed in on are academic performance, specifically math and reading scores and student engagement and social emotional learning. Without these, you know, these are the, really what we believe are the critical elements for preparing students for high school. And without these, we worry that students will enter unprepared or not as prepared as they could be. So how do we measure these outcomes? Well, under academic performance, we're looking at two specific metrics. The first is third grade reading scores and the second is sixth grade math scores. Why do we choose those? They seem, they seem kind of arbitrary. Well, we actually reviewed the academic literature on this. And those are some of the strongest predictors of high school success in those subjects. And so that is what we are going to be measuring and holding ourselves accountable. And if, you know, if we are successful, we will see those scores rise. And on the student engagement, social emotional learning side, that's a little trickier admittedly to measure because how do we measure a student's emotional health? It's actually very difficult, but tools do exist. One that we are currently using is the developmental asset profile. And that really assesses all of the assets, you know, for success that a student has or perceives that they have. And that could help us track how, how these measures improve over time. And so we, we do want to see the measures for social emotional learning improve. And my sense is that as the, as more research is done, we'll see that happen. Great. So that's the theory of change. And that obviously was a major undertaking that was actually made possible, again, through a grant through the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative, to bring on a consultant to help guide us through this and to provide some of their own professional expertise here as practitioners. And, and we think we're, we're very confident in this new vision and direction. And, and really, I, we haven't, this was finished around the same time as the COVID Relief Fund. So it's all very new for us. So as we're looking towards this coming year, this is really going to be the first year that we're trying out this new blueprint in practice. So moving really from a theory, theory of change to the practice of change. And that's where we are right now. So looking at our current work, the Back to School Campaign, we're, we're very excited to have launched this. We worked very closely with the district. As soon as the announcement was made that we would not be returning in person this week, we, we asked ourselves the question, what do kids need to make district, to make distance learning a success? And what resources are currently being fed into the district to help meet those needs? That we're not duplicating anything. And here's what we came up with. Here's the, here's the campaign. Our goal is to raise $250,000 in a week, by a week. And it will go to supporting three critical needs, three critical resources to make distance learning a success. First is mental health counseling support. Second is Wi-Fi and broadband access. And finally is supplies, which includes noise canceling headphones. So digging into the details here, the mental health counseling program, it will be $45,000. And that will expand that Garfield pilot program that we were talking about earlier to Hoover and Taft, providing 10 hours of counseling per site. And you know, our goal is to see that grow as we continue to fundraise. And it will continue to be through One Life Counseling. And we are actually pursuing grants separately to increase those hours. So hopefully we can get more hours at those schools. But we're first starting with the $45,000, which we think is, is going to be an enormous help to the schools. The second area of investment is Wi-Fi access. And this is going to be $100,000 to support the county's Wi-Fi initiative. So, you know, last week at their, at the board meeting, the county approved a multimillion dollar project to provide free Wi-Fi to some of our Bayside communities in partnership with public agencies like the Redwood City School District and Sequoia. And what we are trying to do is help pay the district's share of the cost there. And so, so help, hopefully help take that burden off the district because we recognize what a, what a critical need that is for our students. And this is supplementing the hotspots that CZI has previously supported. And finally, it's the area of school supplies. And it may seem trivial sometimes, but, but really what I think a better, a better, a better, a better name probably, learning resources. And these are the pens, the pencils, the markers, the highlighters that every student needs, but not every student maybe have access to. And it also includes noise canceling headphones. And this is really important, especially for students who are living in multi-generational households, to help create a quiet learning environment where they can learn at home. And so these school supplies are going to be provided to each of the 1,700 students at Hoover, Garfield and Taft. So we're very excited about that. Our target population. So here's where we see the theory of change in practice, right? So this campaign is specifically targeting the 1,700 students at Garfield, Hoover and Taft. 90% of them are low income, 70% of them are English learners. So we do, we do see this, this as a population that needs extra help, especially because these are families who have been disproportionately affected by the COVID crisis. Our progress so far. So we have raised, the numbers should now be like 4600, 4700,000, I'm sorry, $47,000 from community members, which we're thrilled about. And I'm also very excited to announce that we have received the largest gift, the largest, single largest gift in a single year in RCF's history, in our history. We're thrilled. And this is from Premier Capital, which gave us a $125,000 donation, covering half of the entire campaign in one fell swoops. That, that gets us, with, with the community contributions, that gets us to about 80,000 left to raise. So we are, we are absolutely thrilled and we're just, we're floored by their generosity and so grateful that they're able to make this possible. And again, it is a historic gift from our CEF standpoint. And we think it really just shows that when, when there is a pressing community need, people will step up to the, will step up to the plate and support. And we're just really, really proud that we have community partners like. So we'll continue working on the Back to School Campaign. And, and you know, we do have enough funds to move ahead with purchasing all the school supplies, all the noise canceling headphones and to finalize the contracts with the counselors. So we're hoping that those will go out. It's not likely, frankly, that they will go out before school, but we're hoping to get them out very soon after. So we're going to be placing those orders very soon. So looking ahead at this year, let's first acknowledge that this is a year that is unlike any other. And it does require sort of a different response than how we would approach a normal year. I think normally we would like to, the original plan for us was to, was to spend this, the first quarter of this year, listening and learning and researching the various interventions we could embark on. We would spend essentially until spring fundraising, we've identified what those interventions are. And then, once we've identified the funds, we would make the commitment for the 21, 22 school year and what programs we would fund then. But because this is such an extraordinary year, because there are so many pressing concerns and, and we know things are going to surprise us, right? We want to stay flexible and we want to be responsive to needs that specifically come out of COVID. And so our approach is to remain flexible. We want to stay in close communication and partnership with the district to, to be able to respond quickly to needs as they emerge. And once we get through the Back to the School Drive, Back to School Campaign, we're going to be considering what our approach will be, whether we will continue to raise for needs in this school year or whether we will start shifting to the following school year. And a lot of that will just have to depend on what the situation is at the time. And if pressing needs emerge, if it looks like we have it pretty much covered and, and, and we don't have too many more resource needs, then we will look to the other, to, to next school year and fundraise for next school year. And we also want to continue to engage parents and PTOs, even, even though that's COVID. You know, the reality is, is that resources are going to be constrained across the board. And it's more important for us than ever to be efficient with those treasured community resources so that we're spending them as possible. And so we do intend, we do commit to doing very, very close communication and partnership with the PTOs and with the district, of course. Well, that's all that I have. I know that that was a lot and I appreciate you, your listening. And, and again, the district has been such a tremendous partner to us. And, and we are just really grateful to all the work that you do. My contact information is there and you can feel free to reach out anytime if you have any questions. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason. Do, are there any comments or questions from the board? I can't see all of you, so if you'd like to. Go ahead, Alyssa. You're the only one I can see.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Jason, for that report. That was a great overview of sort of where RCF has been and where it's going. And I just wanted to say thank you very much. I mean, I know that your board and volunteers worked really, really hard on Measure H. We've had lots of conversations about that, but you know, that was huge and it's too bad it didn't pass. But I do agree, I think it helped raise awareness and it did bring on some additional new volunteers and new people into our community who want to help. So I think that, you know, all moves us forward. So thank you for that. What a banner year in fundraising. That's amazing. I mean, and I think it goes to show that the focus on our most underserved students and families really does resonate with people who want to donate to RCF. So I think that shift from, you know, sort of where you've been to sort of moving more to equity and the underserved populations, I think it seems to really be resonating with donors. So that makes a big difference. I mean, if you look at sort of past years and then what you've been able to raise just in the last year. I, I did want to say, you know, in addition to DAP, I don't know if that's something that the district's already doing or if that's something extra you'd be doing. Obviously that needs to be coordinated with the district. But we also have a climate survey that does have some data that would cover some social emotional kinds of questions. So I would just recommend looking at that as well. I don't know if you already talked about that or not.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, well, we will, we will definitely use the, the school climate surveys. That's a, it's a fantastic resource.
Yeah. So that's a, that's a good tool. Other than that, I mean, I just, you know, I'm very pleased with the, sort of the direction of RCF and sort of what's going on. So I don't really have any questions, but just want to say thank you.
Thanks, Alyssa. We really appreciate that. And, and look, we have no, we have no regrets about Measure H. You know, it was a very worthwhile effort and we'd do it all over again if we, we could. We probably will.
And I do know I saw one question in, in the chat from a parent about Music for Minors. And I don't know if you want to talk about that now or if that's something that's still being talked about, but they just had a question if that would still be funded in the future.
Yeah. So it's definitely something we would consider funding. But you know, I would say that we have a new way of, of looking at our work, right? So all of our programmatic investments have to align with the, you know, with the impact areas that we, that we have seen. And, and we are going to be funding those programs that we feel best advance those metrics. And so it's not to say that Music for Minors doesn't, but we just have to reevaluate it from that new lens and see whether that is the best investment for us. So, you know, given, given the areas that we want to see movement in. So, you know, we're not making any commitments. So, you know, we're not making any commitments now, but certainly we will continue to, to, to evaluate that among many other proposals that will, that will come our way that we think could advance these goals.
All right, thanks, that's all for me. I don't know if other board members want to say something.
Can I? Okay, thank you. Jason, thank you very much for your presentation. I'm glad to see the historic perspective and the new information that, from what I know, a lot of people don't know that you guys have changed your direction and your mission and all of that. I did have a couple of questions. One, you said you were going to reach out to the parents and the PTOs. And in the past, one of the questions that parents had was, why should we give to the Redwood City Education Foundation? And it was, well, it's going to come back to your school. So how do you see that relationship now?
It's a great question, Maria. So to, so to be sure, the relationship is shifting because I think part of our challenge in the past was actually articulating what our distinction was from the PTOs. Because a lot of parents are confused, like if, if, why would I give to RCF if I've already given to my PTO? And what, what our response to that is, is was to say, you know, our focus is actually not to, to channel it into schools with PTOs, but really focus on those schools that don't even have PTOs at all and who need that extra private fundraising support. And so our hope is that this makes it actually clearer for people that the dollars that go to RCF are being targeted towards, towards underserved students within the district and specifically those schools that have high concentrations of, free and reduced price lunch eligible, eligible students. And so hopefully that takes out of the equation some of the perception of duplication there. And that it just makes crystal clear that this is really about, you know, channeling our resources with the principle of equity, you know, forefront in our mind. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, um, the other question I had is, parents would also ask when they made a donation to the foundation, you guys keep a certain percentage, right? I can't remember what it was.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not sure what our practice was in the past. And we've, we've taken sort of different approaches based on different campaigns. So for the COVID relief fund, 100% went directly to the program. We didn't take anything for administrative overhead. But we also, but moving forward, we are, we are charging a 15% management fee. And that helps us to cover, you know, staff time, the accounting, you know, the program design, you know, all, all of the work that goes into the backend of setting up these campaigns and evaluating their success in the long run. So 15% is generally what we're going with, but that might vary. We also do have fiscal sponsorship relationships with various organizations in which we manage donations on their behalf for a 10% administrative fee, which is pretty standard. So what we found is that if we didn't take this administrative fee, that we were, we were running into the issue of not having enough to, to basically pay our bills. And so this is really a, a measure that we implemented to, to be sustainable as an organization so that we can continue to, to fund rates for these very work causes.
Yeah, no, I totally understand. I mean, before it was totally volunteer driven. Some of our board members were part of the Education Foundation Board. You know, some of them are still with us, like Dennis. Hillary is another one that was always working and doing all that. So I understand that. I was just trying to remember what it was because that was one of the questions people asked. And I understand that you need to pay, you know, your staff and all the other stuff that you guys need to do. I, I have, this is more of a personal thing for me. When you speak about the underserved students, to me, that means the students with the greatest needs. It's not that the school district is not serving them. And I can tell you, because Dr. Baker especially, has made it a high priority to make sure that all our students are served. So when you say underserved, although I, I understand the meaning of it and the definition, it just sounds to me like the school district isn't doing their part. And I just want to know that, I want people to know that isn't necessarily the truth. It's just that they have greatest needs, like the English language learners. You also spoke about the metrics and you were going to look at sixth grade math?
Yeah, sixth grade math, third grade reading.
Right, so I understand third grade reading. And the math, I thought it was the seventh grade when they placed the students in high school that they'd look at the test scores from seventh grade. You guys might want to check that out. I don't know what your research showed, but from what I remember, it was the seventh grade test scores and Dr. Baker could probably help you out with that more than I could ever do. I also noticed that where before the donations were more like from the parents, local community, you're now getting the bigger sponsors. And I think that that change was made once they had an executive director that can apply for grants.
Yeah, that, that's definitely true. And, and it, it's very interesting because it actually, it's kind of a pendulum. Because about a year ago, only about 12% of our total revenue was individuals. And the rest was either corporate sponsorships or grants. And that, that was an intentional decision by, by my predecessor. And, and largely that's because we can get, we can get larger donations that way. And so now, that being said, in this current year, our individual contributions are closer to 44%. So that is, that has actually swung back the other way. And so, you know, the reality is, is that we are going to chase down the dollars wherever we can find them, right? I mean, we, as a fundraising organization, we want to channel as many resources to our students as possible. And so we want to build out that individual donor base. And I will say, we have made good headway in that. And, you know, really, I think it's health, it's, it's really healthy to have a good mix, frankly, of all of those different sources.
Yeah, no, I wasn't being critical. I was just thinking when you announced your largest donation, I thought, well, it's from a corporate sponsor. I was just thinking about the funding of the counselor at Garfield that there was a funder there before that was meeting this need. And now that is coming to an end. So you guys stepping up with that just replaces it, which again, it's that underserved kind of thing for me that I have a problem with. But I would like to thank all the volunteers that have worked so hard. And your board, especially for all the funding and all the resources that our students have benefited from the organization. And I hope that it will continue in the future. So I'm happy to see that you let the community and us know what's going on. And there's just one more thing. In the past, we would all, the school board was always informed and included and it was all the members. And that seems to have fallen off as the different executive directors came on board. And I know that that was really important for us to work together. So I hope that we can continue that partnership and that information of flow, which has been improving since Dr. Baker's on your board. And with that, I have no more questions.
Yeah, thank you, Maria. That, these are all really helpful points of feedback and we'll take it, take it very much into account. And absolutely, you know, we all have an open door. You have an open door with me. And I do have very regular conversations with trustees and, you know, want to, want to remain in touch. Dr. Baker and I, you know, do meet, do meet regularly. And, and that is one of the big, big blessings of having him on our board is that, is that, is that wonderful line of communication. So we absolutely want to maintain and grow that.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from the board?
Janet, if I could say something?
Sure.
Oh, so Jason, thank you so much for coming and doing the presentation and giving the overview. And then also thank you and the board for moving forward and making the decision on this new direction of working with our most vulnerable students. That is really going to have an impact on the needs that are also in another area of the Redwood City School District. So thank you and, and the board also.
And thank you as a member of our board.
And I'll just echo that, thanks to you, Jason, and to your board and all the work that you guys have done, especially during this, this pandemic and how you guys have stepped up to help all the families. Really appreciate that.
Thank you, President. Thank you. Thanks for inviting me here, we really appreciate it. And, you know, anyone can reach out anytime and really appreciate this opportunity.
Great, thank you.
We will move on. Where are we? So we are on the bond program consent items. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Dennis?
Second.
Is that Maria?
Yes.
And a roll call vote, please.
Ms. McBride?
Hi.
Chelsea Marquez?
Hi.
Hi.
Vice President McAvoy?
I think you're muted, Alyssa.
Hi.
President Lawson?
Hi. Okay, great. So there are no bond program action items, so we can move on to 9.1, discussion on COVID-19.
Yes, and good evening, everyone. So what you're going to hear this evening is a compilation of what has been taking place since we had the, it was July, I believe, 22nd that the decision was made by the board for us to go full distance learning for the fall of 2020, 21. In the presentation this evening, which you're going to be listening to and learning about is definitely the guide to distance learning for our teachers that was developed by our staff here in the Redwood City School District, led by our Assistant Superintendent of Ed Services, Liz Wolfe, assisted by Dr. Lynn de Montes and others within the district office, along with staff development. We, you're also going to hear a bit about, our administrators have had PD over the last couple of weeks. They actually came back on, I believe, Monday, they're supposed to be back on the 30th of July. And they, some of them came back on the 27th to go over a review and a recap of what we were going to do when they came back on the 30th. With that, they came back and we had professional development the following week where we were exposed to the different types of platforms that teachers are going to be using with students and that parents are going to be learning about. And our teachers are back now also doing professional development. As you heard from Ms. Barish, who spoke earlier, they are back. The new teachers started back on the 10th, but our other teachers came back on the 11th to work with their principals and to work on their schedules to start the distance learning. And, and then today, yes, today is Wednesday. Yes, today, they started with their professional development and going to different sessions that they felt were needed for them to become more proficient and what they're going to demonstrate on how to use the different platforms with their students. And then you're also going to learn about instructional assistants and our library technicians who are going to also partake in some professional development. And then there is a guide for parents. It's almost done, it's not there yet, it's almost done. It's in the works of being translated and there's some, still a couple of pieces that need to be added. I know the preschools are adding their section and I know special ed was adding their section. And so we're making sure that we get that covered. And during the presentation, you'll learn about some parent trainings that are coming up relatively soon. And then we're going to also show you a few samples of schedules. Now, these schedules, I want you to understand, and Ms. Wolfe will explain even further, teachers came back yesterday and started working on these schedules yesterday with their principals. So what you have at this point in time is a sample, not all of them. I know some of them, some of the principals are ready to send them out. And I know Ms. Wolfe and myself already got, received emails from the principals, can we send them out? Can we send them out? And says, well, let's go through the process with the board first and then we'll, we'll get them out to parents. So Liz is going to share with you her PowerPoint. And then we will definitely entertain any questions. The other items that are on for tonight also is for Wendy Kelly to also talk a bit about the MOU that we have with our teachers association. And then we will talk a little bit about childcare and where we are in that respect at this point in time. So Liz Wolfe, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, President Lawson, members of the board, Dr. Baker, everybody who's listening. I'm going to share my screen with you. And this was just uploaded not too long ago because we were still waiting for a few more final details about some of the schedules we're going to be showing you. So you can see this now, right? You can see my screen? Okay, great, thanks. Okay, so Dr. Baker gave you a nice overview of just about everything I was going to say. So I'm trying to think of some additional details that I can give you that haven't been mentioned yet. You did receive the Teacher's Guide to Excellent Distance Learning. It was sent out to all teachers Monday, I believe. And it has been used since then in a number of different professional development opportunities that I'll talk about in just a second. But for the people who have not received this guide, I just want to give a quick overview of the kind of information that's in it. And I want to also let you know that it is a living document, although what you have all received isn't editable by most people. There are a few of us who still have editing rights and we will continue to add units and updates and information as we go along. So we're hoping that this becomes a living document that's a resource that's useful to all of our teachers. So we have the overview of the state and county guidelines, which I'm not going to talk about because you've heard it so much about that. But we also gave them a list of people to call if they have questions. Call or email, of course. Initially, we were preparing this document for the new teachers and we thought that it might be helpful for them to have a guide who's available to the district office, who's available at the school sites for different kinds of questions that they might have. And then we ended up making a pretty complete list for all staff. We have gone over the goals for our Redwood City students and staff, particularly goals that are pertinent to our distance learning time that we find ourselves in. And then we gave some guidance around scheduling. And we'll be talking a lot more about that a little bit later. We have linked the resources that are available for the curriculum in English, Spanish and Mandarin. And then that was updated and the information that teachers were asking for in terms of what are the materials that they have available to send home was also given to the teachers because we know that so much of the information that the students need is online for them, but they also need to have whatever workbooks and materials and things that they can read and, you know, notebooks and things like that. So all of that was information that was given to the teachers. There's an overview of the district-wide assessments and there's actually going to be training on one of our major assessments coming up next week. There is a link to our learning platforms and our tech tools so that teachers have that all in one place as well. And then we also linked our pre-prepared instructional units that our staff development coaches worked on over the summer that have been made available to the teachers to use the first two to three weeks of school as they are welcoming their students back into class after not having seen students for quite some time and helping them get used to being back into a classroom situation. They're very focused on social, emotional learning and teaching the tools that the students will be using. There, we are under development right now. We're developing a hyperdoc because we're interested in having teachers share lessons from across the district that will be curated. But as teachers develop lessons that they feel are good lessons that they would like to share with others, they will submit those and we will take a quick look at them and post them as a resource for other teachers in the district at that same grade level. There are links for social, emotional learning to support teachers in this as they welcome their teachers, welcome their students back into their classroom. And we also added a section about talking to students about race because we believe that this is also very important always, but particularly at this time. We have last year of terms, we have a lot of information about special. We have a lot of information about special education as well as a pretty extensive list about who is available at each site for support and questions and information about, um, students who may be exhibiting that they have some special needs. So this was shared with all teachers and administrators and with you on August tenth. So as, um, Dr. Baker said, we also began with some professional development with the, um, administrators coming back early to begin this. And we went over that, um, the handbook with them. But since then, we have also been talking quite a bit about distance learning because we know that as we are, um, preparing our principals to be better supports and coaches and oversight of the teachers who are also learning how to do, um, a really strong job of distance learning, that they need to learn also what that looks like and what it feels like to actually create lessons. And so we had a hands-on experience for our administrators in developing an asynchronous lesson that we asked them to learn some tools in order to prepare their back-to-school presentation. And they did this using apps and the platforms that the teachers will use and embedded some videos and had to upload their resources. Some did a great job and some, including myself, were significantly challenged by that. And so it made it quite clear to us that this is a challenging situation that we're putting our teachers into and that there, there needs to be a lot of support, understanding and compassion as we all learn and improve over time. The professional development for new teachers, as Dr. Baker said, was on Monday. And we have an amazing group. We had sixty-six people in the room, in the room, in the virtual room, who were very enthusiastic and asked a lot of great questions. And we also went over the guide with them in terms of what to expect now that they're Redwood City employees. And then starting today, we started our professional development with all teachers. We introduced the guide again and answered questions about that. The primary teachers, uh, the K through five, were looking carefully at the units of study that had been developed for them, um, that were linked in the guide, but also were, what were called out so they had an opportunity to practice, um, developing those units into more synchronous and asynchronous instruction using the apps and the platforms. What we found out is that many of the teachers are still uncomfortable with those, um, apps. And so we did some rearrangement to our plans for tomorrow to kind of slow the pace down to, um, kind of differentiate the instructions so that people who were using some of these apps for the first time had more of a chance to slow down and get more comfortable with the apps. The sixth through eighth grade, we're also looking at, um, the development of synchronous and asynchronous lessons. And then each of the groups today had afternoons where they had one-on-one office hours and had opportunities to speak with coaches and with each other as they did some planning together. Next week, we have additional professional development for our teachers. And this is where we're going to, um, spend more time talking to them about the assessment, the IREDI Diagnostic Assessment that we will be giving to all students in language arts and in math towards the middle and, and to the end of September. It's, each, um, assessment is about an hour long, but because we're giving them remotely, the recommendation is we break them into like fifteen to twenty minute segments a day. So we, we spread them out over time and we're going to be getting more information about how to do that next week. There will be an update on the National Urban Alliance work for teachers who are involved in, in, in that program. There is also, um, the opportunity to learn more about the SEAL units, the Sabrato Early Academic Language units. They have developed some additional units for the beginning of school. And so the teachers who are involved in SEAL schools will be able to be, um, uh, spend some time taking a look at those units as well as there continues always to be an individual menu of choices, recognizing that we need to differentiate for the different levels of what people need to learn to be able to feel confident with the beginning of school. And then there's also mandated HR, uh, human resources training. One of the things that we found out today is that, um, there has, for all, we're trying really hard to, um, send out information in, um, a consistent, uniform way. There's still a whole lot of questions about, um, devices and about the distribution of devices and about training for devices. So I'm not going to go through, these are linked in here so that you can see these. We are sending these out, if they haven't already been sent out today, to the TK five teachers based on the questions that they asked and to the six eight teachers. So that, again, there's, we know we need to, we can't communicate enough and we need to find every possible venue to do this communication. And I wanted to sincerely thank Bronya Whip for recognizing this need and putting these PowerPoints together in a second and sending them to me to post them here and then sending them out to the teachers. As Dr. Baker mentioned, we will be having professional development also for our instructional assistants and our librarians next week. They have been invited, um, to this training where they will be attending. There's a number of different things going on for them as well. Some of this, if they're a special education instructional assistance revolves around special education assessments and training. But it's also giving them the opportunities to hear what the teachers are learning and going to be doing so they can partner up with them as well in terms of, um, helping them prepare the lessons and then being part of the synchronous and asynchronous instruction that's coming up and that includes the librarians. And so as Dr. Baker also mentioned, um, another mammoth document is in process and we're hoping that it's really seen as a useful tool when it's actually done. Again, it started off the five pages and now it's up to thirty. So it's not quite ready to distribute yet because we do keep thinking in more things that might be helpful for parents to have all in one place. And so these are the topics that you will see. We, we pretty, are pretty sure we'll have it finished by this weekend. And again, it needs to be translated and so that of course takes longer. But we also go over the state and county guidelines very quickly. But then we have our, our definition of what is distance learning that we provide for the families as well as a very extensive list of who can they call or email if they have any questions about a number of different, um, components. We give them access and information about the learning platforms and tools. We provide online resources for parents and students that have been put together recently and also curated from the past, from preschool all the way through eighth grade in different languages for, uh, families who are working in support of their students in bilingual programs, in Spanish and Mandarin immersion programs and in English as a second language. We do a quick review of our, our, the parent responsibilities for setting, um, up their students to be successful at home, what our expectations are for students to be successful in their at-home learning. There's information about attendance and engagement. These are new requirements from the state that we collect attendance every day. And so there's information about how we're going to do that. And if in fact a student does not engage for three periods or three days, that's still to be worked out. There is a, a number of outreach, um, steps that are going to take place to reconnect with that student. No one is going to fall through the cracks. We are giving information about our homeless and our foster youth students, about what kind of services they can count on. We are also talking about how we support the mental and emotional well-being of our students and talk about some of the community schools, services and the outreach services, our teachers on special assignment, all of whom are available to support students. There's a section on IEPs and how we're supporting the students in distance learning, um, who have IEPs. There'll be a section on supporting and, um, enriching all of our students with gifted and talented, um, enrichment kinds of activities. As, as John said, there's a whole section that's been added now in preschool. And then there's information about ongoing services in terms of food and other kinds of things. And a quick little FAQ at the end. Certainly not every question that's ever been asked, but some of the ones that are the main questions will be at the back and then we can continue to add to that document as well. So there's an official rollout of this handbook on Monday, August twenty-fourth from six thirty to seven thirty and that will be in both English and in Spanish. But we, it will be available before then. So we, we can talk at the end of this, how you would like to, um, see this come to you and, and, uh, be, we will most likely be linked to our website and that kind of thing. We can talk about that. But we want to have a presentation and talk people through it if they have any questions. So that being said, there are a series of painting, uh, parent trainings that have been developed. Tomorrow is the first one, our special ed webinar, and this is a link to that webinar. And that is talking about promising practices that the, um, teachers learned over the summer who had the summer program, how they were able to really do a, uh, very strong job of, um, supporting students with IEPs through distance learning. They're going to be talking about what they learned and what they plan to continue this year. And then that same webinar will be provided in Spanish next week. Then what we know is that there's a huge need for our, many of our Spanish-speaking parents to have some basic, uh, training around devices, um, getting an email. We know that it's quite a large number of our parents who don't have an email, how to get a Gmail account because, um, they'll need that in order to, to receive some of this information and the links for, um, the platforms and the applications. There will be a webinar that we don't have, they're not linked yet because we don't have the, um, I guess August seventh would already happen. But the, the upcoming ones will be linked, um, for the, how to use Seesaw, then how to, and that will be in Spanish, and then how to use Google Classroom. And then that same webinar will be provided in, on August seventeenth in English. On the eighteenth, um, we're going to have webinars in English and in Spanish on how to log into the device and clever in order to access Google Classroom. Our, our interest is to, trying to get these prepared and pushed out as quickly as possible so that when the time school starts, people have a basic understanding of how to use the materials. Um, on August twenty-fourth, as I mentioned, is the webinars on the parent handbook. And then Familias Unidos, who, um, I'm pretty sure you're already familiar with, it's, um, run by Nifa and Secundino Zuno. Nifa, who is one of our staff development coaches, are preparing a series of classes to support newcomer families, grades K through eight. Then, uh, we're going to talk now a little bit about the school schedules. And what I'm going to be showing you are schedules that were just turned in today. So we know that they are still going to be modified. There will still be some changes made to them. But we wanted to show you the variety of the different kinds of ways that people are addressing, um, what were the, um, expectations for their schedules, which we gave to them. They had to at least meet the minimum number, um, of minutes that were required by the state. And what you'll see is that, um, the schools are exceeding the minimum requirement for state instructional minutes and that they build in both synchronous time, which is time with the teacher, and asynchronous time, which is the assigned work, but might have the teacher popping in to that time, but it's not like full-time with the teacher. So that it's, both of those are components of their school day. And that the synchronous and asynchronous time be somewhat staggered across the grade levels because we know that this kind of schedule can significantly impact families that have multiple children in the home. So that, that's a balancing act. It's not easy to, um, to solve. So what, what we saw in looking at all of the schedules today is that the, the schedules vary in how the synchronous and asynchronous lessons are addressed. One of our recommendations was to consider, um, dividing up a class into cohorts so that each group of twenty to thirty would be divided into a group of fourteen to fifteen and that they be, uh, thought of as two cohorts. Not only because it's easier to prepare small group instruction if you've got fifteen students rather than thirty, but also when it comes time to pivot back into a hybrid model, we've got our cohorts already set up. So that was something for them to think about. They didn't have to do it that way, but we made that recommendation. And that, um, also within large groups, um, you'll see that many of them are starting with a synchronous lesson and then from there, they're moving into small groups. So if they're not doing a cohort model, which is already the small groups, they're taking that larger group with everybody starting together and then they're breaking them into small groups. Because we know that everybody together on, uh, on a device in a Google Classroom without any kind of, um, small group instruction, isn't even something that we recommend in, when we're in person in instruction, right? We always say that a little bit of instruction from the teacher followed by a lot of hands-on time in small groups with, with students learning, um, with support, right? And, um, differentiated by what they need. So I'm going to show you Selby, um, Alejante Selby's. And it's confusing to take a look at, but so what I, I want to explain it a little bit. And again, it's very possible that this is going to change, but, um, this is where they were when they turned this in this morning. So the TKK, um, schedule shows that they're starting off the day at eight fifteen with a synchronous. Everybody is in a class meeting together, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. As we know, Wednesday is their day for asynchronous learning activities. So Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, there's a class meeting for fifteen minutes and then they all do phonics together for fifteen minutes. But then they break up, right? They have a whole, a whole group lesson. If we just look at Monday, they have a whole group lesson, um, from eight thirty to eight forty-five. And then they break up group A, group B, and group C. And so what's happening with, when the teacher's working with group A, group B and group C are doing the kinds of things that are listed over on the left-hand column there, where they're doing the daily five, they're doing RASKIDS, they're doing pre-recorded read-alouds. There's a number of things that the students are doing. And then they switch in every fifteen minutes, the teacher is working synchronously with one of those groups. So they're working part of the time independently, then they're working with the teacher, they're working part of the time independently, and then that carries through each day of the week. And the same thing happens for all the subject areas in TKK. They have a synchronous lesson where everybody works together and then they break up into three small groups after that. And then that's, this is just through their whole day and they go until, um, two o'clock. So, um, uh, first and second grade are very similar to that where they do the whole group lesson and they break up into small groups. In third grade, it's a little bit different. They have broken their class size into the two cohorts, into cohort A and cohort B. And then they flip-flop those cohorts each day. So everybody's together for the homeroom from eight fifteen to eight thirty-five. And then from eight thirty-five to nine oh five, the green is the, the teacher doing the synchronous lesson with cohort A, while cohort B does the asynchronous lesson and it gives, uh, the kinds of activities that the students will be doing for that period of time by themselves. Then they flip and the teacher has the, um, does the group B, the cohort B, the green now is the synchronous lesson with the teacher and cohort A does their asynchronous work, right? So they kind of flip-flop within that, within that period. And then what they've also done is they've added an additional thirty minutes into their language arts time for intervention support. So they built the intervention support directly into their, um, their schedule. And so the students would be regrouped at that time and so the ones who need the intervention support would get that from between nine thirty-five and ten oh five, while the others continue to work asynchronously, right? And so that, also, you, you will see throughout the day, they have a similar kind of program where they're working with one group synchronously and the other group is asynchronous and then they flip. And then I want to show you fourth and fifth because it's even a little bit more, even a little different, but it's still the cohort group, right? So on Monday and Tuesday now, they also have cohort A and cohort B, but rather than meet with the, well, actually, it's the same. So they're meeting with, um, for period one, they have a synchronous language arts with cohort A and cohort B has asynchronous. And again, they're, um, giving them their, their must-its, but they have a choice of those things that they need to do. And then they flip, right? So that, that same group then, um, who was synchronous for the first part of the period becomes the, um, asynchronous part and then the asynchronous group becomes the synchronous part. And I'm starting to sound like I'm not, not making any sense, but I think you can see from these pictures, right? So they're, they're taking cohort A and cohort B and seeing them both every day while, um, they are managing to, um, work with one group while the other group is working independently. And that goes throughout the day. I want to show you Mandarin immersion, which is, um, also doing a similar kind of thing, yet a little bit different. So they, this is Mandarin immersion first grade. And so you see the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday with, um, Wednesday, the kinds of things that will happen on Wednesday in the Mandarin immersion program. But again, they have taken the group for, in first grade and broken them into two. So cohort A and cohort B. And so while cohort A is reading, whole group read aloud and follow. Cohort B is working asynchronously and then they flip, right? And so that happens for the first forty minutes of the day. And then they keep everybody then in a, in a group together, but one, one group is reading with the teacher, the other group is reading with the aide and then they flip, right? So they've also looked at how they can bring in their instructional assistants as part of this work to support some of the synchronous time. Um, I'm, this is Clifford's. Clifford's looks pretty traditional in terms of they have their blocks of time where within cohort, um, cohort A and cohort B for them, or is it they just have two, two classes at that, at that grade level? So it's, they didn't, they didn't break them into smaller groups, but, um, so for cohort A, for example, has math and it's going to be both synchronous and asynchronous. And what they'll be doing as time goes on is looking to see how much time should be synchronous and how much time should be synchronous within these periods of time. And many, uh, of our, uh, middle schools are doing that. It has some information down here also for you in terms of what they do on Wednesdays where they are doing asynchronous assignments, but they are breaking that up with their study hall where, um, they've got, um, one of their teachers is going to be working during that time to work with students. When I talked to Judy, she said, study hall isn't a very fancy thing to call it, but it's going to be really, um, checking in with students and seeing how they're doing and kind of a, uh, social emotional kind of time for the students. But we do have a couple of our schools who are looking at, um, at, at their middle schools at doing the cohort A and cohort B like the primary grades were talking about as well. Their schedules weren't completely finalized yet, so I couldn't show them to you. They're color coding them and doing different things with them. And so I, um, I'm not going to put them up here now, but we can talk about them. And so I'm not going to put them up here now, but we can talk about them. But they're doing a similar kind of thing where the two teachers are team teaching for a subject area at their grade level. And then while one, and they've broken into Cohort A and Cohort B. And so Cohort A might be working with one teacher in language arts. And then the math teacher is working with another cohort. And then they, then they switch, right? So that they have opportunities for team teaching. But then they also have opportunities for students who are seeing a teacher for one period and then not the next period, but then the immediate next period, they'll see a teacher again. So they don't go very long without seeing a teacher. And that's that. And so now is the time for questions, so I will stop sharing.
Thanks, Liz. So Dr. Baker, we have more presentations in this, right? Or is this?
No, there's, I'm having Wendy that's going to talk about the MOUs that we have, the MOU that we have with our CTA. And then we're also talking a little bit about childcare, where we are with that at this point in time. But if the board wanted to ask any questions in regard to the schedules and understanding that these schedules are just starting to be developed, that they started with them yesterday. And if you have questions, this will be the time to ask questions. And then we can move on to the MOU with our CTA and also the childcare piece.
Okay. So I was asking, because we do have a couple speakers cards, but we can take those after the other presentations. Ford, do you guys have any questions or comments? Dennis, go ahead.
Yes, first, thank you so much. It's great to see this starting to get on paper and formalized. Can you talk briefly about what PE will look like?
Do you want me to do that?
You can do that, or Wendy, one of you, either one of you. Because I know there's the middle school that's doing something a bit differently. And then we have PE plus. And if it's PE plus, then that's different too.
Yeah, so it is different. It's different, and the difference, some schools have PE teachers and some schools have been using PE plus. So the PE teachers are doing, it depends on the school, is all. So some are doing a period of time of PE. Some are pushing in and/or are supporting during the asynchronous time that the students are working independently. Some are recording videos and having those available for students to use on Wednesdays, after school time, you know, during different times. PE plus, we're talking with right now, and that's going to be focused on K5. And they're very interested in doing synchronous lessons, K2, and then asynchronous lessons. So the recorded lessons, 3.5. The challenge is trying to work it into the schedule. They only would have one person per school. So because it needs to be a certificated person in the K2, if they're going to be actually teaching the lessons unless the teacher is with them. But then if the teacher's with them, the teacher's teaching language arts or math, or you know, doing one of their subject areas. So we're in the process right now of trying to figure that out. We just had a conversation yesterday to begin thinking about that. And we'll see how that, those, the certificated person can be used during some of the synchronous times, probably much more easily on Wednesdays, but in terms of the other days of the week. And then the recorded lessons would be also available for students to use at any time, right? When they needed a break, when they were finished with the day, if they needed to have a little stretch during their asynchronous time. There are, there are breaks built into the schedule. So there might be a 15-minute recess time that they could, they could watch the video. But I can't tell you yet what that schedule will be. But I know the PE plus wants to determine that schedule pretty soon. But we weren't able to do that. The first priority was to get their content area schedule settled.
I just wanted to add just a couple more items to that, to what Liz said. That's, that was very accurate information. Another part to this, which I think is useful, is that principals are also brainstorming within the PE teacher's job description, other opportunities, which is great. The PE teacher job description actually allows teachers to conduct programs in health, wellness, nutrition. So the idea of electives to that end or around that focus has been retained as well. And some of our PE teachers actually have other credentials. So it's really a nice time to explore meeting the needs of students in PE and then looking at other ways that we can support students and teachers in different ways than we have in the past in this unique time.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Yeah. I was on mute, sorry. I was asking. Felisa, go ahead.
Um, yeah, so first of all, thank you very much. Boy, what amazing amount of progress. And you know, I did just want to say, I am amazed with this teacher guide to excellence and then the parent guide to distance learning. I was chatting with a few colleagues in other districts and they are not doing the same level of sort of support, I think, out to our teachers and staff with all the professional development, just the resources in one place and, you know, all of this kind of stuff. And then same with parent training and outreach. I think that we're really providing a lot. So I just wanted to say thank you to our staff. I know you're working double time to make all of this happen, so thank you very much. And I did have a question about, when you look at, well, I have a couple of questions, but one on the cohorts. Are there other opportunities, so not just having kind of A and B? And I did see one that had ABC. So you know, even 14 or 15 kids can be a lot for, particularly for our smaller, our younger kids, right? So are we going to have opportunities for smaller groups still or some one-on-one? I realize this is just sort of a schedule. I mean, there's going to have to be flexibility, right? Because I would imagine the teacher's going to get into and realize, okay, this is working, this isn't working. It's so many, I don't know if you could talk a little bit to that, sort of what's the thinking in that?
So absolutely. When we had our conversations with the principals a couple of weeks ago to start thinking about it, so much more learning takes place in a small group, right? And so what, one of the reasons that we were recommending the 15 or the 14-person cohort to begin with is that that's much easier to break into smaller groups using Google Classroom. It's harder to break into smaller groups using Google Classroom with 30 kids. But if you only have 14 to 15 kids, you can put three groups of five, right? And so that was one of the reasons that we had that recommendation. And the summer school actually piloted that. And there is a way that you can use Google Classroom to make those small groups. And then you leave those, the tabs open, and you can jump into those small groups, even if they're working independently. You can keep your eye on them. And then you can also be jumping in to check to make sure they're being appropriate and, you know, staying on task. And so that is one of the reasons it's harder to do that with that many kids, with 30. But if you have a smaller group of kids, you can break them up into small groups. Because that's, that was a really strong recommendation on our part, was to not, to try not to do too much whole class, even with older kids, right? That most of us need to have more attention in smaller groups and opportunities to ask questions that it's not as easy to do if you've got 29 other kids. But if you only have four or five other kids, it's a lot easier to do.
That's great. Okay, so that, and I think we were getting some questions in the chat about that as well. So that's, I think that's helpful for everybody to know. I did see some questions about, is there transition time in between the schedules? I guess, you know, some of that'll, I guess if you're going from synchronous to asynchronous, then you can just naturally make your transition time and take care of any needs you have before you jump into asynchronous, but.
So there definitely is transition time between.
Need a break, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. And so there's transition time between the, kind of like the blocks. But in terms of moving from one to the other, there would always be the need to have some transition time as well. And so I, one of the things that you just reminded me of, Liz, that I forgot to say is that, what we know is that we are going to need to improve on these initial schedules, right? This is, this is what we know or think now is going to work really well. But we have to try it out, because it's much more complex than what we asked people to do last spring. And so this is our best attempt at thinking about, how can we start the year that makes sense for the different grade levels and the number of teachers that we have and the different kind of complexities within the program that we have. But we will be reevaluating this in about four or five weeks, maybe not even that long. You know, we'll see how it's working and we'll get input from the students. We'll get input from the families, we'll get input from the teachers, and see what kind of modifications we need to make to the schedules. The schedules aren't fixed and sewn from now until the end of December, or whenever it is that we come back. We know that we'll have to modify them in some way as we learn more.
Yeah, yeah, good. And then I did have a question about homework. I know we've gotten some emails about that. And you want to say where we're at with homework?
I don't know if we've even talked, discussed about homework.
I mean, I do think it's something we need to think about, that it's a little bit different. That if you have a school day, kids are moving around and there's resets. You know, it's just a different sort of day. And then you might go home and do an hour of homework or something like that. But if you're sitting in front of the computer all day in this sort of, you know.
Yeah.
We all know, because we're on these Zoom calls. And by after five or six hours, we're all exhausted. And the last thing you want to do is, so I just, we need to, you know, in consultation, obviously, with the teachers and what we want kids to be learning and all that, I think we need to have an honest conversation about what's developmentally appropriate and what we can do. And if we need to revise the homework policy or just come up with a separate sort of understanding, I think that would be helpful.
Yes, thank you. It definitely is something, we just haven't gotten to that yet.
Yeah, no, I mean, you've got a gazillion things to get to, but I just think that's going to keep bubbling up. Because teachers may be doing different things and not knowing what the expectation is. And anyway, so I think that'll be helpful. One other question I had, I know this came up in some email exchanges that we had about kind of social emotional supports and check-ins with students. Do you want to say a little bit about, you had mentioned that some of the instructional assistants and librarians may be helping with that as well? So that might be useful for people to know about.
Sure. And so that is something that we are going to be paying a lot of attention to. Not only because we know that we, it's super important to find out how our students are and get to know them as they come in. But it's also an expectation and a requirement now from the state that if students don't engage, that we reach out and find out what the problem is and remedy that problem. And so there's a flow chart that we're working on that starts with outreach from the teacher. If the student hasn't engaged or hasn't shown up. And then if that doesn't, if they can't resolve the problem at that point, then it bumps up, you know, to the office. And then other people would be calling at that time, right? And then it could bump up to Antonio, right? Who's our, you know, kind of our social, our student services person. But that we, we have a number of people that need to be involved in reaching out and trying to contact the student. So that's, that's part of our, an engagement process, a re-engagement process that we need to work on. But prior to that, there needs to be, students need to be checked in with daily. I mean, that's, that's the law, right? And so not only are we checking in with the teachers daily, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, but what is happening on those Wednesdays, right? And so we're also looking at who all can be part of those other check-ins, not just the teacher seeing the kids, but that there are other people onsite. There's a number of, principals are planning assemblies. You saw that whole list of things that were, that the Mandarin immersion, that Catherine's thinking about doing at the Orion Mandarin immersion program, where, you know, there, the number of assistants and different people who are at the site are checking in with kids and having yoga classes and doing a number of kind of enrichment kinds of things on that day as well. Real focus on social emotional work on that day. So the schools are thinking of different things. But throughout the day, every day, students are, the expectation is that students are being contacted and seen and identified if there seems to be some additional need or support. And then, then we're going to have this process in place to how to give them that support.
Okay, great. And then I did have a question. I don't know if it's a good time to ask now or later. Is the number of independent study students that we think we're going to have? I know you were trying to get that information. I don't know if we have that yet, but I'm just kind of curious in that number.
Wendy, do you want to, I think there's only five, is it five right now?
No, actually, the line was today, so it grew just a tad. We have approximately 12 students that have, or families that have reached out to me regarding independent study. Two have chosen, two additional have chosen homeschool, which requires them to withdraw from the district. I met with the principals affected, and they will be working with the family for the next steps and providing the contract and going over all the pieces to that. But I do anticipate other families may be interested as we progress forward. They want to try out the distance learning and figure out how that works. But there's a lot of parent oversight needed for independent study. It's, it may not, it's just a different model. And so that is what we want to make sure parents are fully aware of when they agree in that, for that process. So there's more conversations that are had for individual families. But we have right now about 10. Some families have contacted principals directly. So I would imagine the number is actually 10 to 20 at this point.
Great, thank you. And then I think Amy, what had the question about school, students moving around in classrooms? Amy Bartz?
Oh, that was Pam.
That was Pam.
I'm sorry. I just combined, yes, are they twins? Sorry, Amy. Or Pam, I mean, sorry, Pam.
So when it comes to the schools of choice, when we were talking about the hybrid model, that was weeks ago. We said that, you know, no students were going to be moving. Once the students were placed in school, placed at the schools, with schools of choice applicants, and they were accepted, no one else is going to enter. Because remember, we were going to have the X amount of cohort, and that's all you had to have with the two groups. It's a little different now with the distance learning. But what we did do, when the principals came back to work on the 30th, was their first day back, we contacted each of them to find out how many spaces they had in each of their grade levels so we could place schools of choice. Now, Henry Ford, and I've got the information right here. Henry Ford, as far as kindergarten, they're still waiting for four kids to accept or not. That's where they are as of today. And the office staff and the principal know that. And if those four accept, that's it. I mean, I mean, they'll be at their, they'll be at, you know, they'll each be at, they'll be at 27, 27, 27 kids. So when we did have a hybrid, we did say that, you know, because school was starting and everybody had to be in their cohorts, we were not accepting any kids after we had them. Now, this is a little different now. It's distance learning. And if you don't have, say, a new kid moves in, a new child moves into the school boundary area, and there's only 27 kindergarters in a class, they can have 28. So one, and if it's a home boundary child, it will go to the class. So I understand Pam's upset with us. But then also last week, we had that hiccup at the district office, and we closed the district office starting on Wednesday, as you all know. And I sent the information home to parents because of a possible COVID case that we may have had. But we still kept working on the schools of choice. So they're at where they are going to be. Students' parents have been notified. And at today, and as soon as Pam sent me, you know, Pam made the comment, I texted Melanie, and Melanie says she's waiting on four kindergarten students for Henry Ford that have until Friday to say yes or no, they're going to take the placement.
Then, so basically, as of Friday, things will lock in a little bit more about which students are going where.
But the only thing, unless, unless there's a, say, there's a new child that moves into the area, or say there's no other kindergarten availability throughout the district. Say a child moves into the Roosevelt area and there's no more space in kindergarten. They each have 28 in their classroom. Then we have to find a school that has space in kindergarten, just like we do during the normal school year. And that's where that child will go. If we would have been in that hybrid model where we could not enter kids, and once kids left, we still could not bring new kids in, that was a different story. But now with the distance model, it's changes its flavor.
Okay. Well, thank you, that's all I had.
Okay.
Anybody else, board members? Okay. Oh, sure.
Yeah, I would like to thank everyone, starting from the teachers, for being so flexible. You know, last minute changes, all the administrators for having the teachers back and support. I do know that they put in a lot of hours. I mean, especially now being, working remotely and transitioning back to the school sites. I know that a lot of people put in, you know, more hours than. I know that a lot of people put in, you know, more hours than possible sometimes. So I do appreciate everything that everyone is doing and I do just want to say that. We just need to cross our fingers that things will go right this school year. And, you know, again, just be patient with everyone and hopefully, you know, like Liz mentioned. In the first three to five weeks, they can do some tweaks to make sure that all kids are learning. To the best, you know, possible way. So that's my only comment. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just wanted to repeat something that Elisa mentioned and that's that. I think that we have done significantly more than a lot of the districts around us. And, you know, when I shared on Facebook, the, the parent webinars that were coming up. It was shared by other parents from other districts in the county that said, we need something like this. This is amazing. Redwood City, you're doing great. So thank you guys for all the work that you've done to put into this. You know, there's going to be, there's going to be hurdles and speed bumps and. We're going to have to roll with it and we will. But we'll get this started and when, you know, when we need to make changes to the schedules, we can do that. I've heard from both of my schools that I will be getting my kids' schedules at May's Day, so on Monday or Tuesday. Is that the case across the district for all schools?
You know, it varies. It varies from school to school. Before we had, when it was in person, the, the May's Days, we kind of chunked them out. So everybody would be doing them at the same time. But with the distance learning piece and how the schedules are being created and then modified. Because some teachers, as Liz said, are, are, are pairing up together and others are. Getting the momentum of moving forward and getting some extra help from some staff development and the coaches. That I believe it's going to depend on the school site. So I know there's a school site that emailed us today that's ready to send theirs out right now. It's, we've seen it, we said, fine, it's ready to go. Liz, myself, and Wendy have been reviewing them for, for many different types of. Items that we want to make sure that are there. When Wendy starts to talk about the MOU, she's making sure that the items that were agreed upon about the MOU are adhered to in schedules. And then we are making sure that we're adhering also to look at the synchronous and the asynchronous. Work that's going on and the amount of time. The other piece that I wanted you to also note is that there's, there are guidelines now for the administrators in working with, with the. With teachers in distance learning, which I all shared that document with you because that becomes part of their evaluation. And the principals are very much involved in the day-to-day operations now more so than ever. And they also are having to partake in office hours and make sure that parents are aware of those office hours. And have more communication with their families. The other piece is that on Wednesdays, they're going to be doing some of the synchronous work. Which I, I applaud them for that and, you know, if I can help them out, I'm willing to do it. To get out there and do some synchronous work myself too, to get to know some of the kids. And, but we're all, we're all in this together. And so we're all putting our best foot forward. Because this cannot hap, this cannot replicate what happened in the spring. The spring, we were thrown into it. We did the best we could. It was crisis time. This is not, this is planned out. And it's something that we want to move forward with, with our students and with our families and with our staff. So with that being said, I'm going to have Wendy start talking about the MOU with RCTA. And then from there, if you can go on to a bit about the childcare and what we've done to locate spaces at our schools. That the classroom is vacant because a teacher has decided not to use the classroom, but to do their total work from home.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So I have a handful of items I'll be talking about. And John mentioned the RCTA MOUs. We actually have three of them. One of them was on the board agenda. I'll explain a little bit about two of them going to more depth and about the distance learning one. Towards the end, and then I'll answer any questions and then move into the childcare because they're two different topics. So in regards to the RCTA MOU for guest teachers, that was later on the agenda. This is an opportunity just in case we need a stable substitute situation for upcoming events that we might not be able to imagine. With teachers or leaves or what have you, day-to-day subs and so forth. And so it's a great opportunity to have somebody who's well-trained, who can jump in, who has access to the platforms we're using and so forth. So that was one of the MOUs that we signed. The second MOU was regarding the professional development. So the teachers were fantastic and understood the need and wanted the training. And so we were able to offer this week of training, as Liz mentioned, along with some flexibility. Unfortunately, we've been on a fast-moving train and so the MOU really was. Signed, you know, later into July and so the notification to teachers was short. So the ed services team recorded trainings. So to give teachers some flexibility, all trainings need to be completed by August 24th. And then of course, it also came with the choice of per diem pay, which is a teacher's daily rate per day outside their contract. Or professional growth units, which helps them advance towards the salary schedule. So that's the second MOU. But the third MOU really is a focus on distance learning. And that MOU is more substantial. It was the recognition that we're in a unique time period. That our CTA, our teachers' union, is concerned about health and safety of their members. And recognizing that our district has a big feat ahead of us. And so the first part of the MOU recognizes that, that we are in agreement through full distance learning only. If and when we go back to the hybrid model, we will enter into a new MOU with RCTA. And in preparation of the hybrid model, we will allow for teachers to have one day of preparation time to get back into their classrooms and prepare properly for students. And that will be supported with teachers who will assist with regular daily live interaction with students when that happens down the line. The second part is the ability for the teachers to really recognize what distance learning is defined as. Including interaction, instruction, checking in. Through live interaction meetings, pre-recorded videos, recorded live meetings or other types of instruction using technology. That we are able to utilize digital resources, print materials, and all of the state mandates with an SB 98 or any other state mandate that comes to be. And that also, all of these digital platforms will be shared with our supervisors and so that accountability. And the feedback process can be important. We do recognize that we're in a unique time. I know our administrators will be great in their delivery and supporting teachers. With next steps for them as we adventure into this new type of teaching. But the need for administrators to be able to quickly go in and out of platforms as teachers are using it is very important. For oversight, for feedback, to check on students, very much like they would walk into a classroom in a regular time. The next item is ensuring that we actually give our teachers clearly written protocols about. How students will have access to devices and timelines for that. That when we determine what the time accounting measures from the state are, that we communicate that well, of course. For student attendance and participation. How the district will support teachers and other support staff in contacting and re-engaging students who have been truant. From digital classrooms or disengaged to some degree. So we're calling that the disengagement prevention plan. So we don't want that to happen. So looking at more hands available to assist with that effort, as Liz mentioned. And then the process for reporting the illnesses and symptoms to supervisors. Every employee is required to fill out a health wellness survey, whether they're working remotely or onsite. So that we can help with the tracking and tracing process. As you know, the county is not supporting us in that yet, I'm hoping. So we do need to do that internally. And we've actually had quite a few, you know, approximately, you know, less than 10. Situations in which people were concerned about symptoms and we have a really tight process in place. Notify people appropriately, even those that could potentially be exposed. And luckily, we didn't have anything, any concerns. And, and people were safe and resting at home if need be, but we didn't have any positive cases in that regard. And so fine tuning that process is really important and making sure that we are communicating that. Everything has been sent out to employees by HR already. But there's also, as Liz mentioned, quite a few HR trainings coming up that involve health, safety. Cleaning, what needs to be cleaned, how they clean. The district's responsibility for safety, items on COVID-19. And then our typical trainings we do each year on mandated reporter and sexual harassment prevention, et cetera. We also have new board policies on distance learning and teaching, which was presented to you last time. So that's included and working remotely. So in regards to the full distance learning model, it was recognized that in order to do an excellent job. Teachers needed the time and space to create these asynchronous work, to be able to prepare great lessons for students. And as you saw in the schedule, be able to ebb and flow between different groups, you know, 15 minutes here, 15 minutes there, et cetera. And they need the time to do that. So similar to a regular school year where there are other teachers, credential teachers on staff that provide garden or art or PE or electives. Or reading intervention supports, et cetera. We're utilizing all of our credential teachers to support the education of students. So prep time is included in the MOU. But the student's schedule reflects different credential people working with students all throughout their schedule. So that all teachers can have some sort of prep time, but the, but the students are working on synchronous or asynchronous lessons accordingly. And within this prep time, it was agreed upon that teachers, of course, would create lesson plans, field digital resources, enhance online classrooms. Assess student work and give feedback, create engaging instruction materials such as videos and interactive lessons and collaborate with other teachers. So typically, we would have a minimum day Thursday in our, in our typical year. And teacher preparation time, although parents may not even realize this, was built in for many grade levels. So within our contract, we are eliminating the minimum day Thursdays and those other additional prep time pieces. That we can have a more systematic prep time schedule for everybody. But for the student's perspective, they are going to be working each day. Then there's language in here also just about the understanding of what's required to work remotely. And that we do have classrooms available. Teachers have the choice to work in their classrooms. We encourage them to do that if they want to. Because many of their resources are there, but those that feel comfortable working at home and are able to do that successfully are able to do that as well. We also are providing the needed equipment, of course, for teachers and instructional assistants, but in this case, teachers with the MOU. To have the necessary work phone numbers assigned. So there's language in there about that. And then principals have in their accountability plan. Check-ins with teachers every two weeks about student progress and distance learning instruction. So teachers will sign up for times every two weeks to debrief the progress of students and, you know, so we can catch things quickly as we need to. And then also, you know, making sure that obviously our teachers have access to the leaves that are available under the law. And that's of course, an important requirement. So those are the main components of the most recent distance learning MOU that was signed on August 3rd with RCTA and ratified. And we are pleased that it was such a great collaborative effort. We had two meetings, we came to consensus pretty quickly about things. And we thought it was very fair. So at this time, I can take any questions about the RCTA MOUs.
Wendy, I have a question on, you, you just mentioned this, the, every two weeks, there would be check-ins on the progress of students. Who are the check-ins with? Are they with the principal and the teacher or the teacher and the parents?
No, in this, in this case, it's the principal and the teacher.
Okay.
Principal and teacher are going to have a formal check-in every two weeks and go through the rosters and determine. You know, if there's any areas of concern or anything new that's come up, look at assessment information, look at grades, et cetera.
Okay. Cause I know one of the things that we heard about. Last year was that some of the parents at the end were sort of surprised by. Sort of the lack of progress around their students or concerns with grades or comments in the grades like, so. I just hope that there's more regular communication. So, you know, if there's some concern about specific students in addition to having the conversation. Principal and teacher, that the parents are informed so they can get on board to help out and figure out what needs to get done, right?
Right, agreed. And I, I do think it's going to be very different than it was in the spring. If you recall, of course, we went to a pass fail. Or a complete incomplete, excuse me, model. And that changed some of the feedback that was given, for sure. Now, on the report card, some, many teachers made comments, which really helped, but then that was, of course, at the end. In this time period, we have our platforms that can give regular process, progress reports. We also have the iReady assessment that is data available for teachers to use in conversations. And so we're utilizing our traditional methods of communication of student progress moving forward, different than we did in the spring. And I do think with the student outreach mechanisms, that it's not only attendance, but also that academic progress from the appropriate person.
Anybody else have any comments or questions?
I had two quick ones. It's probably too early to know, but do you know how many hours or units of training were done over the summer? I know teachers have to return them, so maybe early.
Yeah, they have until September 30th, so I don't have that data handy.
Okay, okay. And then do, do we know the percent of teachers that want to teach in their classroom?
So actually, I'm going to segue to that in a bit. We have 350 teachers. And at this point, we have 80 classroom spaces slash teachers. That said that they will not be returning back at all during the distance learning time period. They're going to be exclusively working remotely. Other teachers that, that, you know, the, the difference in that math, approximately 270. Said that they either want to utilize their classroom to just quickly pick up things, to be there for one day of the week, or to be there every single day. So there's a large range in that regard.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work on this. I know you read all the time about districts that have actually started school and don't have MOUs. So thank you to the teachers' union for being responsible and helpful. And thank you to you for all your leadership.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. And on that note, we are actually actively working with CSCE. So I know that wasn't the topic right now, but I do want to let people know that we have had two meetings regarding the MOU. And are, are fine tuning it as we progress along. So I will bring that back to the board at a later date. Hopefully on the 26th, that would be lovely. All right. I think I'll segue now into the childcare.
Maria, did you, you unmuted. Did you want to say something?
Just answer my question. I'll wait until the childcare part's over.
Okay, go ahead Wendy.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, regarding childcare, I, I really want to give a big shout out to Fady Ortiz, our director of community schools and after-school programs. She has such great relationships with our partners, Boys and Girls Club, Reach, Parks and Rec. And very resourceful in our district. So it was really great to team with her on this project. I know that there has been a lot of conversation with parents about childcare. I'm a parent myself. I'm usually trying to set up childcare in March for the next school year. So this is a very sudden, uncomfortable experience. And I appreciate everyone's patience. There was a lot of i's to dot and a lot of t's to cross in this regard. So what we did was, I know as a district, we really want to support the efforts in childcare. I know that's a prerogative of the board that I've heard over the last, you know, few months. And while we're not in the childcare business, we really want to put our brains together to figure out how we could support this. And so what we decided to do in the survey out to teachers to determine who is not returning. We formed a list of the 80 classrooms or so that were available. we formed a list of the eighty classrooms or so that were available district-wide for those, um, teachers that would not be entering the rooms. And Patti is working with the Boys and Girls Club, Parks and Rec, and Reach to look at identified students that would benefit from a childcare experience during the day uh, from nine to three or so, that's the timeframe, because we also then have to clean the rooms and so forth. And so the parks, so all of these organizations are right now working with their boards to determine what this would look like, what their staffing availability is in order to pro- provide the maximum amount of space for students. Right now, that's at twelve to one per classroom. So we worked with Martin and Dawn, Martin Cervantes, our director of facilities and maintenance, and Dawn, our assistant superintendent of bond construction. And they were fantastic in really coming up with an amazing formula, which I don't think I could do the math on right now, um, to decide how many rooms we could use per site based on those available eighty and the bathroom usage. I mean, I've learned more about bathroom cleanliness in this tanker than any other time before and high-touch surfaces. So the ratio of minutes between custodial assistance to making sure those, those rooms are needed is, is really incredible. So what we're looking at when, uh, we broke this down is an ABC schedule for cleaning for classrooms in which, or other work sites where there's only going to be one person. For example, the library, or classrooms in which a teacher is only working there by, by his or herself. Um, those can be on an ABC schedule. But every other surface is still going to continue on the AB schedule, which is the electrostatic sprayer and then the, the intense disinfecting the next day. So that would be office, uh, areas, reception areas, bathrooms, of course, and high-touch surfaces being wiped down frequently. So our lead custodians during the day will be spending much of their time doing that type of work. And then the night custodian will follow up with those classrooms that are utilized. And that also includes the lunch area where kids may eat in the childcare program, preferably outside until the weather becomes poor. Um, and any other surface space. So really kudos to Dawn and Martin for crafting this formula just this week, um, in fact, yesterday. We were able to, um, determine that so we could hand the list over to these organizations and say, this is how we can support you in this endeavor of childcare, because it's not our, uh, venue to do that. We know that you're the experts. But we want to make sure we have the space available and support with custodial supports. So, uh, that's, that's one piece of it. The second piece is that PCC is also interested in partnering with utilization of space. And so Patti's working on that. These are, any moment, these, um, agreements are going to be finalized. So we know that people are under stress with childcare and we want to make sure we can communicate this as soon as all of those i's are dotted. Um, Clifford and Cloud will still have their Kids Corner organization, their private daycare, and Roosevelt Rainbow. And then the Orion Campus has two groups that will also be there. One is through the Mandarin Immersion Program and another one is Play Thrively. So around the district, there are options during the day for families, um, that need support. And part of the interest of this is to provide a space for not only supervised childcare, but I know that Liz mentioned there would be opportunities, if it works, to have some of our staff train those, those childcare providers, just at least on how to interact with students in a platform. Because assumingly, these children will be working on their distance learning with their classroom teacher. So those are ways that in kind, we are supporting this effort, um, recognizing that we're not in the business of childcare, but we do know that there's a need around our community. And, um, so Boys and Girls Club probably will be focused on Garfield and Hoover and, and left, um, although we have construction there, so we're working around that. Um, and, and then those other locations will be finalized momentarily. So that is, um, that is a few bits of information about childcare. Uh, as I mentioned, it's during the day. We're looking at approximately nine to three. And, uh, there's a big meeting tomorrow that is facilitated by Redwood City Twenty Twenty and Rise Up. And Patti's going to report out because the county is also looking at what they can do countywide for childcare assistance. But without some of that progress happening yet, uh, Patti really moved quickly and started this process with our own partners. And it really goes to show the strength of our partnerships in our community, not only just in a typical year, but certainly during this difficult time. So been really impressed by them. So that is the nutshell on childcare. Um, are there any questions regarding that topic?
I don't have questions, but I just wanted to say thank you to everybody. I mean, from Liz, uh, this presentation, it all seems to be coming together. I really liked the parent component as well. And with the teachers being flexible, all the extra training, uh, childcare, I think, you know, it takes everybody. And I know you guys have all been working super hard, so I just wanted to say thank you to everyone involved. Uh, I think we're almost there to getting the kids back at the school and learning. Well, not physically, but anyway, learning. So thank you very much to everybody.
I did want to add just a couple of items, if you don't mind. You know, and, and I, I noticed some comments in the chat as well regarding childcare. So I, I don't want to paint the picture that we, that as a district, we are enhancing or, um, or supporting families' decisions one way or another. I know it's a very difficult task to determine if you're going to send your child to a childcare setting or if you're going to have them at home. But for some of our families, this is vital. And so it will really need to be a family-by-family decision about whether childcare options in which there will be a cohort of students that will be meeting regularly. Similar to what you're hearing in the news about learning pods, there's microschools. I did a lot of research on these types of ideas. And I recognize in all this research that many times these learning pods, um, are valuable in many ways because you have families that get together and are able to have the resources to pay for a teacher, a tutor, et cetera. But we also have, there's a big socioeconomic divide with learning pods. And so this was an effort for our community to pull together and offer the childcare for those that actually are in a situation which they need it and don't have another venue or groups of families that can afford such a system as a learning pod or a microschool or lots of the other terms that are being used this, um, time about, you know, grouping kids together in that type of fashion. Okay. That concludes my portion, John.
So Jenna, I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Um, what's the process for selecting, um, students for these programs?
That's a great ques- oh, sorry.
So Dennis, you know, you know, there's the Boys and Girls Club, correct? So they have their own process and how they dealt with that in the past. The Reach program is the same thing. They have their own process and how that will operate. Now, with the other pe- the other entities coming in, like PCC, it's on a first-come, first-served basis. And from what I understand, there's already a waitlist for PCC.
And, and we were intended to be involved with that process,
Right.
mainly because they have a great system and, 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 uh, many of our partners have guidelines on how students are accepted and so forth. And so we're not getting involved with that. We know that they have strong systems in place and we're turning that over to them. Really, our responsibility right now is space and custodial support and supporting that process for them to do.
And is, is the limitation for, for first off, this is great. This is way more spots than I ever envisioned. So, um, kudos to everybody. Um, i- is the limitation, uh, providers having staff? Or is the limitation physical space that we can provide?
No, they were so impressed with a potential eighty classrooms. That was far more than they expected. It really comes down to staffing on their end.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anybody else?
You know, real quick before we segue, I did want to just reiterate the thank you to, um, to Liz, uh, Wendy. I mean, everybody, John, the whole team and, you know, particularly the staff development team. I know how hard they worked to put together all these professional development days and just this whole package. And like I said, I mean, I was talking to a couple of colleagues and their teachers are just being told, yeah, go forth and do without any additional professional development or assistance on platforms or how to set up their homes to, you know, provide synchronous and asynchronous learning. So I just, um, I'm so impressed with everything we've been able to do. And I do also want to say thank you to the teachers and staff for really, uh, collaborating with us on all of this because it really takes all of us working together for our kids. So anyway, thank you very much.
Great. Uh, Dr. Baker, did you have more or are we going to speaker?
No, we, you can go onto a speaker card if you want.
Okay, great. We have, um, just a couple of speaker cards, so I will, um, share my screen for that for the, uh, timer of three minutes. Um, first up is Catherine Stewart. And so Kyle, I think it's under C, Stewart.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, okay, thank you. Um, first off, I'm not in favor of having in-person pods or in-person childcare because I thought the whole point of us staying home was to stay home with kids and our own families and not to mix with other kids so as to not drag out the whole COVID-spreading process. That's step one. And I think, I, I don't understand why we're doing other things that are not that. And then secondly, it would be really great if we could have the schedule and the time, um, as soon as possible. I, I know it's, for some reason, it's hard for you guys to, to get those schedules out to us. But as a parent, um, whether you're a working parent or whether you're a stay-home parent or whatever you are, having the schedules like the last possible minute is just killing us. So we really, even if you don't have a perfect schedule, give us whatever you have, please, oh, please. Thank you. That's from all the parents, please, 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 because people are trying to make plans. Okay, thank you very much. That's it. Thanks. Bye-bye.
Okay, thanks, Catherine. Um, yeah, I think, you know, what we heard is that different schools are getting schedules out that as soon as they can, um, and those will be out before the start of school. Um, we have Ally Gilmore and then, so Kyle, I think I saw it's just under Ally, A-L-L-I.
Hi, this is Ally Gilmore. I, actually, my questions were answered during the presentation, but I did want to take just one minute to respond to the last speaker um, and just say that we really appreciate the efforts around childcare for, um, for working parents who are willing to send kids to some kind of safe childcare situation. I think it's really critical. And there are a lot of parents in the district that are really limited on the choices that they have. Um, and I, I think it's really important work you guys are doing on childcare, so thank you.
Great, thanks, Ally. Uh, next up is Becky Fauch. Whoops. Sorry, accidentally hit the refresh.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, Becky. Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, hello, everybody. I'm a parent at Henry Ford and Kennedy Middle Schools. I'm hoping the board can clarify for teachers some questions about technology needs. First, Google has announced that many fixes, that fixes to many essential education features on Google Meet will not happen until October or later. Meanwhile, Zoom security issues have largely been fixed and has been recommended for all users outside of the most sensitive levels of government and healthcare industries. Given these developments, can teachers expect the board to recommend to allow the use of Zoom in addition to Google Meet as needed until Google fixes have been made? Second, please clarify whether the district has made specific recommendations to provide the necessary technology equipment for teachers during distance learning. The Henry Ford PTA has been exploring ways to help teachers financially this year. After speaking with staff this week and checking the Donors Choose website, where as of yesterday, ten RCSD teachers have projects specifically for technology equipment, cameras, laptops, headsets, et cetera, some already fully funded. It appears teachers have not been given the equipment they need. This is worrisome as my expectation was that the CARES Act funds would have been put towards any technology equipment that our teachers deem necessary based on their grade level and subject needs and done so very early on so they may practice using over summer. Not providing teachers with the tools they need will negatively impact students as well as teachers because if instruction during this difficult time is hobbled by a lack of appropriate technology, it will most likely ref- reflect negatively on our teachers. If equipment is available, evidently not all sites have been notified. So clarification tonight is essential as the first day of school quickly nears. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Becky. Um, Dr. Baker, did you want to address that?
So if there's specific equipment that the teachers, we didn't get a list from any school site that's different than what we sent out. So they have their laptops and anything else, some, we just recently heard about dock cameras yesterday. So I, we're still investigating what type of dock camera they're talking about for, if, so this was from one school site.
And then what about the, uh, Google Meet, Zoom?
We're, um, we are looking into Zoom, just to be perfectly honest, we are looking into that right now to see how that can be, um, another choice.
Okay, thanks.
And so I should have an answer that, on that in a couple of days.
Great.
So about the equipment piece that the principal can get back to us, um, because I've only heard from one school site and, and that's been it. So if there's something different that the teacher needs, we need to be notified.
This is Kyle. I just, if I could-
Go ahead, Kyle.
real quickly, is that I heard from one teacher about the Donors Choose, but I didn't hear from any other teachers. One, one teacher actually reached out to me and said, what should I buy? And do you have any recommendations? Because I have this funding and I don't know how to use it. And so I gave some suggestions, a document camera being one of them, um, a webcam being another one. Um, we also looked into, um, and Dr. Baker approved last week, of getting what are called tablet stages that allow teachers to use their iPads just like a document camera. So we will be purchasing those for all the K-one teachers because they will have students that are using iPads and they will need to demonstrate using an iPad.
Thank you, Kyle. And the other thing that we heard is that the TKK-one teachers, first-grade teachers, said they also needed an iPad for themselves. So we went out and we ordered those also. But, but other than, uh, the iPads and the other apparatus that Kyle was just mentioning, I have not heard of anything else. So if the principals would, what, what I'll do is I'll send out an email to the principals and see if they've heard from their teachers asking for other technology equipment that teachers need so that we can be notified to, to order it.
Thanks, um, for clarifying that. We have one more speaker card. That's Michelle Smith.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Michelle.
Um, so first of all, I just want to, uh, extend a huge, uh, thank you to, um, all of the, the staff that's worked on all of these different things. Um, I know that it's been a lot of scrambling and, um, but, and on the other side, you know, and families wanting it to happen faster than it, than it did, but, um, but so impressed with what has been done. Um, I have a couple of comments, one of which is, um, on the schedule. Um, my son goes to Adelante Selby and I, I, I think that particularly for the TKK-one, my son did a first grade class, um, this summer, it was an academic class. And, um, they ended up having to change almost immediately, um, from those really short, uh, meetings just because it just didn't work. So I hope that that, you know, that you're looking at that, um, frequently. Um, because I think that navigating between one and the other, particularly at that age, like I think my seventh grader might be able to now hop between two meetings. Um, you know, one that ends at nine, another one that starts in fifteen minutes. But my, um, my incoming second grader definitely could not. Um, he'd get too sidetracked. He'd get too sidetracked. The second is like an immense thank you. I just want to echo what another parent said that about the childcare. I'm so grateful that the district is listened and as being responsive to providing space. I understand the sort of the, the contradiction in closing the schools and having, but I think that there are some parents who are having to choose whether or not they can, you know, have a roof over their head or, you know, it's between work and childcare. And if the district can provide some space for those families in the greatest need, I think that it's crucial. And so thank you for coordinating that. The, the last is also about Zoom. My kids use Zoom and having the features with the breakout rooms, particularly for my older child, but also for my, my incoming second grader, was so vital in helping, not just in the small group discussions, but also just keeping the flow going. So with all of that, I hope that we can move forward with that. But thank you so much for all of your hard work.
Thank you, Michelle. Just check. So that was the end of the speaker cards. Were there any, is there anything else? Board or Dr. Baker?
No, I'll just follow up on the requests that teachers have. If there's additional materials that they need or technology, I'll find out. And if there is, you know, we will order it. We heard, like I said, from the TK teachers, the K teachers and the first grade teachers, because the students were getting iPads, they said they needed to have their own iPad also. So we did place an order for, for them. And then, like I say, anything else, we just need to find out.
Okay. Great. So that's the end of item 9.1. It's 9:30. I'd like to take a break. What does the board think? Five minutes, 10 minutes? Is five plenty? Okay, we'll take a five-minute break. We'll be back.
Five-minute break. How'd your meeting go with Henry?
It was there when I got there.
Mask on.
I thought mask on, but we just pretty sad apart, just so I could talk with her. So we kind of, it was nice with your outside.
Yeah, outside, okay.
So we just kind of sat apart.
Did you give him the wipes?
John, can you hear you? John?
Thank you Liz.
Liz. Sorry. Hey Dennis. Where in back of you, what is that in back of you? Where is that?
It's just a waterfall.
Oh, I thought maybe it's somewhere you went.
No, you can, you can go out to these, if you just Google Zoom backgrounds, you can find like thousands and thousands of them. I used to have Old Faithful, but everybody said it was too distracting.
Or you can put one of your pictures in. I put mine in Hawaii and then all of a sudden everyone's like, you're at the beach now? Oh, although I couldn't work remotely possibly.
I like, I like the one of your granddaughter, the new one.
Yep, she's gonna be a mom. I mean, she's got such an attitude, I just love it.
Okay, dokie.
Waiting on, okay, wait, Cecilia and Maria?
I hear crickets.
Yeah, it's like, it's like 90 degrees in my office, I open the window. I'll mute it.
No, that's okay.
My crickets, because I have crickets out my window as well.
I was wondering if it was me.
Yeah, they're going nuts right now.
Cecilia, it's not that.
There's Cecilia.
There she is.
Maria, and there's Maria. All right. Go ahead and get started again. So we're on 9.2. Discussion of the Board Meeting Calendar, School Assignments, School Committee Assignments for the 2021 school year.
So why don't we begin with the, the Board Committee Assignments? There was, you have, you have the one that we had for this school year. And we can just determine how we want to have these committees set up. Would anybody like to remain on the committee, change committees? We will continue to have the Budget Committee, that's a committee that's always a standing committee. So right now, there is, Dennis is on it and Maria is on it.
So John, before we do that, I think we're missing some, so we should add those, so everybody. So I think we're missing the housing.
Yeah, we didn't-
District housing, and I think we're missing-
I took, I took, I took off the 7/11, the 7/11 committee, we don't need anymore. So I put a line through that one.
So, sorry Dennis, for the housing, is that the feasibility study committee? That's at the bottom?
Is that what we're, is that what we're calling it?
I don't know.
The study committee was for the parcel tax. However, we don't have that anymore, so that's deleted. You could call, I mean, I think it really is workforce housing feasibility. And it happens to be that Dennis and I are on that, so. We can just run housing feasibility study.
Yeah, and the other one that's missing is the North Star Forward.
Right.
And who's on that?
Cecilia and myself.
I mean, I would recommend that, you know, we just sort of clean up the list like we were just doing. But unless people have major changes they want to make, just keep these committees until December, because there will be some changes, right? And then at that point in December, we could have this conversation. And it looks like we updated this in December already. I don't know how other people feel, but I don't feel a need to change committees right now unless other people do. And then I'm happy to switch around as needed.
No, I agree with that, because it, you know, it is going to change in December. So I'm fine sticking on the ones that I'm currently on. Does anybody else have anything they needed to change or wanted to change?
No, I'm fine.
So then we, we took off the 7/11 committee, the feasibility Housing Study Committee, Workforce Housing Study Committee.
That sounds good.
Okay. And then we have the North Star Forward.
And then we'll take off the feasibility study committee.
Right.
Or just, we're just changing it up a little bit, I guess.
We're changing it to workforce housing.
Right, but I think the workforce housing study committee would be under the superintendent's committees, right?
Right, right.
North Star Forward is a board rep.
The board reps, correct.
Yeah.
So remind me again, so Dennis and Elisa are workforce housing?
Mm-hmm.
And then North Star Forward was?
Cecilia and Dennis.
Okay. Sounds good. We can keep those, those changes.
Okay. So then you, then, let me see, I'm going back to the agenda quick. So now we have the school assignments for the board members. So this is just a draft. And I think what Eliana did, you just brought everybody up, is that what I remember? Yeah.
So I think last year, when we talked about this, we had said that we were going to remove the special ed, because that just popped up like two years ago. And I'm not sure why we have a rep to that department. Does anybody else remember that?
Right. It was, it had nothing to do with SEPTAR, right? Had nothing to do with SEPTAR. Okay.
Usually when that happens is because we want to work on a special project or we want to see some changes. So I think that might have been it.
Okay.
So do you want to leave it or do you want to take it off?
We can leave it. I, I'm, it's fine. You know what, Dr. Baker, we were going to talk about a connect board. I don't know if it's a board member or, like, I don't know if we do this in the draft assignments or if it's actually what we just talked about. But because we have the option to have somebody from our board, is it sit on their board or is it just attend their meetings?
It attends their meetings. I don't believe they sit on the board.
Not like a voting member.
Right, right. It was, and Maria and Dennis, you would probably remember this more closely than myself when you were on the board in regard to Garfield. And didn't I think Maria was representative?
Yes, Maria was.
And I can vote and stuff, but when I attended the connect meetings, you just are a member of the public. You don't really have a say. And I didn't see that it was that valuable to attend every meeting anyway.
What's the contract say?
The contract with-
With all three charters, like, does it say?
It does not say, in MOU, it does not say, it doesn't say anything about board members.
But the original charter document doesn't say anything about it?
No, it doesn't. It just gives you that we have the opportunity to attend those meetings. That's all it says.
Oh, okay. So that's just like everybody else.
On their board. Yeah, we don't sit on their boards.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So I'm just wondering if we have a board member that would be interested in going to the connect meetings? I think they're on Thursdays.
So right now, it's, on the draft, it says Cecilia. Did somebody else want to do it?
Okay, I see what you mean.
I've already done it, so I think someone else should have the opportunity.
I don't mind doing it. We would just have to change some of the assignments then.
So Janet-
That would give me five and Cecilia two.
So would you, so then if, why don't we switch you maybe with either Taft or Kennedy or some-
I mean, if you guys, I could, I mean, obviously I saw my name on it. I don't mind going. So if you, I mean, we could leave it as is, unless Janet, you want to.
I don't, it's up to you.
No, I mean, I can, I don't mind going.
Okay.
So I'm fine.
Okay, all right. So that, we'll just leave it as, as is then. And I'll touch base with you Cecilia on a couple of things.
And I think their, their meetings are on, are there on, they're not Wednesdays.
I think they're Thursdays. I'll pull up their schedule again.
Okay, all right. So then we'll leave it as it is right now, as it's, as the draft states.
Are we leaving the special ed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Those look good. Eliana?
Okay, and the next is the school board meetings. So I understand that the facility, the bond group, wanted to have a special meeting. So that, I'm assuming-
That was September 16.
Yeah, 9/16.
9/16, and that's a special meeting? And that's just for, for, since I was not at that meeting, Dennis, what was it for?
This is, this is to discuss the money that they think they freed up and to get feedback on, could we get started on spending it?
Okay, and so this will be a special meeting. And it'll be virtual, of course, and it'll start, this one will start at 6 o'clock. Yeah.
Maria, can you be at?
Can you, can you be at that, Maria, at 6?
You're muted.
Sorry, I'm not sure. I'll have to check, but you guys should schedule it anyway.
So schedule it for 6 o'clock, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay. You can do that.
All right. All right. And the next item, the, one of the things that we need to do next is to determine at each board meeting, the subject items that will be coming. And so I need to sit down with Janet on Tuesday and we'll go through those. There's some items I know that, Liz, you're going to have to put through. Board's going to need discussion coming forward regarding distance learning that we have to send to the state. I think there was a public, it's a public hearing and then it's an action item following, if I'm not mistaken.
By the end of September.
Uh-huh. Okay, all right, so we'll just make sure that we get those on here. Um, and then as the year progresses, I'm sure there's going to be some other meetings that will be added. And, um, they'll be added on a, on one of our non-regular meetings. And so there'd be a possibility, you know, having sometimes three meetings in a month necessary. Okay? Any questions on the dates that are here?
Yeah, could you talk about October since those aren't our normal sequence?
Right, when Eliana was doing the, her research, there are some Jewish holidays in October. And so why, that's why we're going at different times. Any other questions?
None.
Okay, okay. Perfect.
All right, so moving on to consent and with consent, we removed 10.4, 10.5, 10.6, and 10.7. And we added 11.6 and 11.7. So do we have a motion to approve?
I'm moved. Second.
Okay, so Cecilia and Maria, a roll call vote, please.
Kristi McBride?
Hi.
Kristi Marcus?
Aye.
Kristi Diaz-Locum?
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy? President Lawson?
Aye. I didn't hear Alisa. Alisa, we can't hear you.
I don't know what's going on.
Can you hear me?
Oh, okay. I don't know, my microphone, I don't know. Okay.
That was weird, yeah.
I'm doing the same thing I just did. I kind of moved my screen a little bit. Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so action item 11.1, adoption of resolution three, approval of ed code options for teaching assignments.
Yes, thank you. So each year, historically around this time, we strive to get all of our ed code options to the board. I am expecting some to come in next week as well. Mainly because we did have, um, a few retirements, resignation slash leave of absences occur over the last week or so. So we've been madly hiring and sometimes that will require some variations of credentialing, which is very appropriate under the CTC guidelines, but they do need board approval. So you have a list here, um, in this case of our, our ed code options are for credentialed teachers who are going to possibly be teaching one period of a different subject than they did in the past. Um, or that falls outside their, um, that they're credentialed. But the state has determined that if a teacher is properly credentialed and is gone through a preliminary and clear credential program, that they are eligible to learn something different and apply it in a teaching setting. So these are the teachers that I bring forward to you today. And as schedules are worked on and changed, there might be some more that come to you over the next week or two. So I wanted to prepare you for that because normally we want to do this well in advance, but this is a unique year.
Are there any comments or questions? What was that?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. So I was just going to say, uh, when you look at this list, these are some of our, Matt Basma-Jurin are our best teachers. So, so I'm totally, um, okay with this. But I just wanted to recognize that they're all just fabulous teachers and so it's, it's not a huge risk.
Right.
Okay, then we need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Dennis. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Cecilia?
Yes.
And a roll call vote?
Kristi McBride?
Hi.
Kristi Marcus?
Aye.
Kristi Diaz-Locum?
She said five, but she was muted.
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy? President Lawson?
Aye. Okay, thank you. Moving on to 11.2, adoption of resolution four, reduction of certain classifieds.
Okay, thank you. So this particular item, uh, is the result of planning over the summer and switching from hybrid to full distance learning. We do have a classification called campus supervisors. And the primary purpose of a campus supervisor, there's multiple things in the job description, but it really comes down to student supervision, crowd control, um, certainly at our larger sites, and, um, intervention between students, you know, if there's conflict and things like that. And so we do have two individuals, two employees who are, um, employed at a larger school that, in, in which now that we're in full distance learning, that particular, um, job description as utilized at that site would not be best used. And, uh, the site principal is also paying for these particular people primarily out of site funds versus general fund. There is a portion of general fund, but it's primarily site funds. So should we be going back into hybrid model? These individuals will be contacted and they will be the first to return back to these positions. But, but at this point in time, um, it's been determined that we, we need to eliminate the campus supervisor position, as it stands right now at two, at one of our sites.
Are there any questions or comments? If there are none, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Maria? There's a second?
Second.
Dennis, thank you, and a roll call?
Kristi McBride?
Hi.
Kristi Marcus?
Aye.
Kristi Diaz-Locum?
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy?
Aye.
President Lawson?
Aye, thank you. 11.3, recommendation, uh, approval of local assignment options in areas of special skill and preparation outside of credentialed authorization.
Thank you. As you may recall, last year, we established a committee on local assignments, which allowed the board to consider, um, teachers that would teach outside of their teaching area for a period here or a period there that is different than an ed code option. And this, we primarily utilized for electives, although it can be utilized for other areas similar to the ed code option. And because the schedules are being finalized any moment, um, I have one item to bring to you tonight to consider. And that here is on, attached to the board memo. We do have more coming to certainly next, next, uh, board meeting, and I'll explain that in a minute. But at this point, we have a teacher who is at Kennedy that has a rich background at, with, you know, can be, um, engineering, computer science, um, he's taught courses on space and so forth. And so he is interested in teaching an elective class on information and communication technology. And he has taught it in the past. But because it does fall outside his credential, well, I'm bringing this to the board for consideration for him to, um, have this approved so that he can teach the elective class at Kennedy. And then also one more item. Many schools are starting their electives possibly later, like, you know, early September, just as things get going. And so we feel comfortable having these items tidied up on August 26th, the next board meeting, because I'm waiting for some of those schedules to come in so we can check credentialing. It's really important, but we're doing this on a fast track. Normally we have a, a couple of months, so.
Any questions, comments? If none, can we have a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Cecilia?
Welcome.
That was Alisa. Yeah.
Thank you, and a roll call vote, please?
Kristi McBride?
Hi.
Kristi Marcus?
Aye.
Kristi Diaz-Locum?
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy?
Aye.
President Lawson?
Aye. Okay, 11.4, approval of provisional internship permit.
Thank you. Provisional internship permit is actually an emergency credential that the state through the CTC offers for individuals that have experience and a bachelor's and have either taken the C-Bass or have a C-Bass waiver to teach as they are working towards eventually entering into a credential program. And so there are individuals in front of you, um, who have had experience or, or, and/or are awaiting various tests and so forth because of this COVID-19 delay. And so what the district is responsible in doing is bringing to you the provisional internship permit for consideration so that we're really buying ourselves some time to get some of these things, uh, worked out through the state, whether that's taking a final test or, um, or having somebody complete some coursework. So it's, it's technically an emergency credential, but what the expectation is that over time, people clear these things up, these various individuals, and then can continue on the regular pathway of credentialing.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Maria?
Welcome.
Second.
Who is that? Sorry.
I think it was Alisa first.
Maria and then Alisa, can we have a roll call vote?
Kristi McBride?
Hi.
Kristi Marcus?
Aye.
Kristi Diaz-Locum?
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy?
Aye.
President Lawson?
Aye. 11.5, approval of variable term waiver request.
Right, this is another type of, uh, waiver essentially that the CTC authorized or authorizes districts to, to submit for eligible teachers. In this case, we have a bilingual teacher and due to COVID-19 and the testing timeframe, a teacher was not able to complete one of her requirements. And so by time, we bring forward this variable term waiver until this one item can be rectified throughout the school year. So this is an opportunity for the state of California to recognize that we do not have a misassignment, that we actually have approval for this, um, unique situation to pass and the teacher to be able to finish, um, her requirement. It was because of COVID-19 and the delays in testing that, um, the teacher wasn't able to fulfill one small part, actually.
Okay. If there are any questions or comments? Otherwise, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Dennis?
Second.
Is that Cecilia?
Yes.
And a vote, please?
Kristi McBride?
Hi.
Kristi Marcus?
Aye.
Kristi Diaz-Locum?
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy?
Aye.
President Lawson?
Aye. Okay, thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
For all of that. Um, so 11.8 is the adoption of resolution five, Sequoia Federal Credit Union and signatures.
So what this item is, it's referring to us, um, receiving another credit card for district use. And this one will be used specifically, uh, under the Maintenance and Facilities and Operations Department. What is occurring now during this pandemic, um, most of the vendors are not taking any purchase orders anymore. So they either want you to come in with a credit card or cash. So they won't even, you know, accept it. We do have checks, but they won't even accept the check because they're going to have to wait till it clears and so forth. So they've been really picky. So this is why this is coming to you this evening is to receive another credit card. We have one for the total district. This will be a second one, which would just be used in the Facilities Maintenance, Maintenance and Operations Department.
Are there any questions? No, and so, um, Dr. Baker, those would, those purchases would come to the board the way the other?
Exactly. Exactly, yes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Dennis and Maria, roll call vote?
Kristi McBride?
Hi.
Kristi Marcus?
Aye.
Kristi Diaz-Locum?
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy?
Then I.
President Lawson?
Aye. Um, okay, thank you. So moving on to reports from board members and superintendents. Does anybody have anything they'd like to report out on?
Okay.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Hi, um, so we, I'm not only going to restrict myself to like the last week or two, not go all the way back to the last meeting. Uh, but we did have a bond meeting and Janet and myself and the bond team. And there's very exciting news. And so that's why we went to September 16th meeting, uh, so we could share that with you and get feedback, uh, with you. Um, and then I've been, uh, Alisa and I have been working with, uh, Peter Si from, uh, the Sobrato Organization. And we've met with, so, so we basically, um, I should back up. We have, um, a rendering of what we think it can look like. And so we've been meeting with city council members because there's this thing called the gateway.
Dennis, can I interrupt you? Uh, can you just, for the audience, what do you mean by what it will look like?
Yeah, so there, there's basically an architectural rendering that, that gives you a, a sense of what the office building would look like and what the workforce housing would look like. And, and it's not something.
Office.
I'm sorry, what?
You're talking about the district office project.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. So, so we had decided a while back that rather than rent out the district office, that we would turn into workforce housing. And then we, um, looked at different providers and we came to the conclusion that we didn't want to give the property up to somebody else and have them manage because there'd be all sorts of issues with that and you might not be able to have it be all workforce housing. So right now, we're, have kind of a tentative agreement, a verbal agreement with, uh, Sobrato Organization. And they, they would, so we're, so we haven't got a formal agreement. We've, we've got a MOU that's with our attorneys and they've already looked at it. And so there's this gatekeeper process for the city of the city where they're going to pick, uh, 10 projects to be done. Five in the downtown precise plan and five outside the downtown precise plan. And last Monday, uh, they did the first five inside the downtown, no, excuse me, outside the downtown precise plan. And then on September 21st, our project will be there. So you can't show the architectural rendering at a city council meeting because it hasn't gone through the planning commission. So we've, we had meetings with five of seven city council members to go over it. And it was about a half hour to 45 minutes with each and just to, you know, garner feedback and, uh, see what they thought. And we're in the process of trying to get the last two. So, so that's the update on that. And then, um, after all the construction people were gone, uh, Dawn and I, uh, keeping well above the, the six feet social distancing. We were about, uh, 16, so, and we were in masks. We visited the Hoover, uh, site and, uh, walked all around. I sent you all pictures of it. But, um, that, that is coming along really well and it's, it's just really exciting, uh, to see all the progress. And big props to the, uh, bond team. That's all I have.
Anybody else?
Well, I can, I can go. Um, you know, just to add to the workforce housing, I think we'll try to get that on an upcoming agenda so we can give a little more, uh, update. So it'll be agendized and then we can have a conversation. So hopefully we'll do that and I guess we're now in August, but either in August or early September. Um, so thanks, and thanks, and it's, after Dennis has been the one who's made the meetings with the city council. So thank you for doing that. I appreciate it. Uh, let's see, so a couple of things. Um, we did get a CSBA Pacer, which is the Public Affairs and Community Engagement Representative for the areas of San Francisco, San Mateo County and Santa Clara County. The idea is the SBA has broken up this state into various regions and those three counties are one region. this state into various regions and those three counties are one region. And so they're deploying a staff person locally who will help with legislative advocacy and just any kind of advocacy or support to the districts around. Can be pretty much anything, I think, from training or whatever. So the person was born and raised in San Francisco. And I've had a few meetings with him. He's going to be on the San Mateo County School Boards Association call tomorrow, so he'll be introduced there. But anyway, if any of you have an interest in talking with them, let me know and I can give you his information. But he is here as a resource for CSBA. So hopefully as he gets up to speed and all of that, he'll be one more person that we can call. Like if we have a question about something going on, we could call him and then he could go find out the answer for us as opposed to us trying to figure that out. So I think it will be helpful. And then on that very note, tomorrow, we have CSBA leadership, including Vernon Billy and really all other senior leaders in the different departments will be on the San Mateo County School Boards Association call, which will be from 1:30 to 3:00. So hopefully some of you will be able to attend that. And they're just going to highlight kind of some of the things they're working on with COVID or any of the other emerging issues and chance for us to have. Let's see, I did attend a couple of CSBA climate change working group meetings and as a result of that, staff is working on some templates for climate change resolutions for school districts as well as cutting together some resource pages on grants and other sorts of things that districts could apply for that would help us with cost-saving measures around energy efficiency or waste reduction or things like that that also help climate. So similar to the Prop 39, there's other monies that are out there that school districts are just not aware of. So anyway, we're sort of trying to gather some of that and there'll be a place on their website with resources. So stay tuned there. Redwood City 2020. I think, John, you already mentioned this, but we, at a previous meeting, but we do have a new executive director, Rafael Aviando. Avi- Avi-
Avin-
Avindanya.
Avindanya.
Avindanya, thank you very much. And I think most of us know him already from the CNAU Center as well as other things. So he'll be great. He's already jumped in and helping quite a bit. And then on that note, we are doing a community needs assessment that the Stanford Gardner Center will be conducting over the course of the next couple of years. And that's basically looking at what are the various needs in our community in Redwood City. And it includes everything from, you know, housing to food to elder care to education, what have you. So more on that, but I think that will be useful just to get some additional data that's more broad spread in terms of what the needs are. And they're working with the various groups that already have studies. I don't think it's dependency. It's gathering existing information and then new. And they're also helping with childcare, Redwood City 2020. So I think the meeting tomorrow is being led by Christine, who's hired by Redwood City 2020. Let's see. I think that's about it. I mean, we've all been on all these weekly calls. And we've been talking about those highlights all along the way.
Perfect.
Maria, did you have anything?
Just the same stuff, the weekly calls. And then the only other stuff that I've done different is just feeling questions from parents and helping them and trying to connect them to our district and the school and trying to calm some of their fears about, you know, learning and all that. So that's all I have.
Okay. I don't have, I mean, that stuff has been mentioned, Redwood City 2020 and bond. So, Dr. Baker, do you have any?
Yeah, there's one item that's different. And I attended a meeting with the the group who is working very closely with the Redwood City School District, Sequoia School District, Cuyahoga College, Redwood City. Because as you all are well aware of, the Board of Supervisors did grant and approve that 2.8, almost $2.9 million be utilized for Wi-Fi, especially in the Bayside area of Redwood City. And so that is going to actually take place sometime in September. I think they have a bid out to get a contractor to help set up the wiring on the Bayside. The other piece is that for one year, we're fine, but then a year from now, you know, there's previously, I think I had reported to you, it's about a $300,000 a year maintenance fee to keep the Wi-Fi up to date in that area. And so they brought all of us who are going to be benefiting from it, including East Palo Alto. Not benefiting from that Wi-Fi, but also getting some of those dollars for the different type of Wi-Fi in East Palo Alto. Come together as a group to determine how we're going to share the cost. So it was a meeting, like I say, of many separate entities that were there to determine what that will look like. Tom, I think Tom's, no, it's John Walton, I think, is the information. Technology officer, something for the county. And he believes that he can bring that $300,000, $300,000 per year maintenance fee, maybe down to about like 250. So among different entities that we would, you know, pay into it to keep up the maintenance. And as Jason alluded to earlier, that's one portion of the fundraising that they're hopefully can garner so that that will help us out in that yearly fee that we have to pay. The, I guess the county is the one that actually takes on the charge of the maintenance fee. But then that fee will have to be divided up by like six different entities. So we'll see how that works out. But it's exciting that Wi-Fi is going to be in that area for people and it will be free. So that's great. So thank you, Warren Slocum, for just saying at the last meeting, just do it, just do it, just get it on the agenda. So a lot of kudos to Warren for pushing it through.
Thank you for getting that done, Dr. Baker. That was so important that we get that Wi-Fi.
It was great. Yeah. So our kids will still have the hotspots to begin with, but once the Wi-Fi is up, we'll be fine. We'll be fine. And remember, our hotspots have, as Kyle explained to me, the bandwidth, the bandwidth is unlimited where Sequoia's, I don't know what they purchased or where they got them from, they are not the same type of bandwidth that we have. I mean, there's, you know, bandwidth is very limited and so it's not very useful, especially when you're looking at different types of videos or you're doing different types of research and downloading. The bandwidth gets used right away. But our kids have, you know, one that is unlimited, so which is even better. And that was, you know, definitely a point that Kyle made sure when CCI donated that the hotspot and also the cost for the Wi-Fi hotspot, that it be, you know, unlimited. And so CCI did that for us through Verizon. But it'll be great when the Wi-Fi is up and running. So that'd be perfect for us. That's what I had to say. It's just excited, really excited that it's going to be in place for the kids.
Awesome. Thank you.
So I had a question. First, I think it's amazing. We've been talking about this for years and so it's just fabulous. You know, the county has Measure K and they're, they've been paying money to different people for different things. So is there any plan for them to pay part of this? Or is there a contribution to manage it? Like the $250,000, are they going to pay like 50?
They put up the 2.8, the 2, it's almost 2.9 million that they're putting up. And so they felt that the rest of us that are benefiting from it, from it, should come up with the maintenance fee.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I always have to ask.
Believe me, a lot of us were asking, Mary and myself were saying, come on, can't you just? We didn't get very far, but at least we got the Wi-Fi. That's fantastic.
Yeah, and the county covering that initial 2.9, whatever is huge.
Yeah, that's so huge. And I'm also just thinking in terms of the maintenance fee. You know, we could, I think that's something that there's people who and foundations who would like to donate to and even I talked about RCF, you know, internet access and digital access was one of their desires. And that's the whole neighborhood where this will be. So anyway, I think there's probably options down the road for other people to donate.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure.
It doesn't have to come out of our general fund, in other words.
Right, right, right.
And Jason's still here, so he can take note of that.
Thank you, Jason, for listening.
Okay, are we ready to move on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Let's see. So we're on to information, 13.1, the adopted budget and COVID operations report for Connects and review of the adopted budget. Were there any questions or comments?
Just a comment to thank Patty Knight for all of her work on this and Priscilla.
Yeah, definitely. Priscilla was here. Oh, there she is. Hi, Priscilla.
Hi, I'm so sorry. Could you hear me? All the while I'm participating here, I thought I'm an attendee. So I didn't know that I could turn in my video and it's just now that I realized that I can't. So sorry.
No, that's okay. Glad that you're here.
Yeah, so regarding the, I just wanted to add regarding all the charter schools. Is it clear to you? Can you hear me clearly?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what we've noted when we were reviewing all of the charter schools is that all of their assumptions for the budget was based on the May revised. And so they're showing significantly lower revenue for LCFF funding. So we are confident that based on what they have submitted that they can meet their obligations, especially considering that the 10% cut was already been eliminated when the state budget was enacted.
Great, thank you. Okay, no other comments or questions on Connect? We can move on to let's see, where are we? 13.2, same item but for KIP. Any comments or questions? None, okay. 13.3, same item but for Rocketship. No comments, questions? Great. 13.4, information on San Mateo County's investment fund.
So I had a conversation with Sandy Arno. If you review the compliance report, there's millions of dollars and then it says 0% allocation. And they're going to get that corrected to show a decimal point so that it doesn't show zero.
Thanks for catching that, Dennis.
Yeah, thank you, Dennis, for catching that.
Okay, where are we? 13.5, 45-day revision of 2020, 21's R CSD adopted budget.
Do you have, do you have any questions for that? I have the spreadsheet. They are basically the impact on Redwood City is on those two categories of revenue, the LCFF funding. So when we presented the adopted budget, we have a 10% basic aid fair share, which is about 1.2 million. So that was restored. And then now, because the charter schools also are getting higher funding with the enacted budget, we are also going to be sharing about $300,000 more in property taxes and in lieu taxes. And then the rest would just be the 6.9 million in in the Federal CARES Act, which at this point, we're just putting it as a placeholder in the materials and supplies expenditure until the, the district will determine what would be the better use for those federal CARES Act funding.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments or questions on that? Okay, thanks so much, Priscilla.
Just a comment. I think probably most of you have been following this, but Congresswoman Jackie Speer did mention it today on the call that you know, they're still negotiating whether it'll be the HEROES Act or whatever the act is that they've got in the Senate and to negotiate that. And she did reinforce once again that as far as the Democrats are concerned in the House, they're standing firm to try to get additional resources for local, state, and that would also be school district budget. So hopefully we'll be getting more money in addition to the HEROES Act, I mean, in addition to the CARES Act money. That's what I wanted to say. So anyway, I think that's only good news for us if we can get that. But she made it very clear that they're not negotiating on that. So we'll see how it all turns out.
Okay, thanks. All right, moving on to correspondence. We've got a few emails about homework, as Alisa mentioned earlier. Anybody else? Looks like none. Okay. So other business suggested items for future agenda. I heard Alisa mention a workforce housing update.
So that'll be an MOU. What has taken place, there's an MOU between ourselves and Sabrato Organization. And as Dennis alluded to earlier, I have sent it to Janet Mueller to review and she did send it back to me this afternoon and made some corrections that she believes need to be included. And so it will be most likely the resolution and then also an update. And we can have Peter Si come to this meeting, too. So it'll be on one of the upcoming meetings because I believe we have to have it either that we possibly could have it either on the 26th or the 29th, or the 9th, or September 19th, I'm sorry. One of those. We'll do one of those. And I'll just let Peter, make Peter aware of it. Is there anything else that one's thinking of that we need to have?
Yeah, I have one.
Go ahead.
So first, I'm uncomfortable bringing this up and I'm glad Jason and some other board members are on the call. But if you go back a year ago, the RCF made a commitment to pay for music for minors of roughly $180,000. And right now, we are owed $122,000. And I think as a board, we need to have a discussion. So I'm coming at this from a finance process perspective. There was a legal commitment. I appreciate we have this great relationship. They've done a lot for the district. But I think we have to have a conscious discussion. Are we just going to pretend like they didn't make the commitment? Are we going to let it go? Are we going to waive it? Whatever. So I think we need to have an agenda item on it. And then I also think as a follow-on, as we probably need to help parents understand, I don't believe RCF is planning to do music for minors. And so that means the district's going to have to pick that up when school gets back in place. And so I think if that's the case, we should just state that.
Okay.
Well, could it be, sorry, Janet?
No, go ahead.
Not just for the foundation, but you know, normally when we get a commitment from someone, maybe we need to look at all of them and put something in place so that like we've done in the past where Priscilla doesn't put them on the books until we got the money or something like that. But anyway, that would be part of what I think we should talk about.
Yeah, so just a clarification, I don't think we are that rigorous. I think it's once they make a commitment, a written commitment, it gets put on. So your point's even more, given what's happened, maybe that's a better point. But I think if we do that, we're going to have significantly less revenue because most of the people haven't raised it yet. But I'm happy to have that be part of it. I just, I just feel like this is just hanging out there with no board discussion or approval.
So I hear that you would like this agenda at one of our meetings, one of our meetings coming up.
Yes.
Okay.
Is there anything else? Liz, it looks like your cat might want to add something. Okay, so then, where are we? 16.1, changes to the board agenda schedule. We talked about the special meeting on, where am I, September 16th?
It was, yes. It was the 16th.
Okay, so that's the only change at this point.
Right.
Okay. That brings us to adjournment. Do we have a motion? That brings us to adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
But we. In honor of Eliana's birthday.
Oh.
Okay, so the who made that motion? Was that Elisa?
Sure, or Maria, either one.
Okay. Lisa and Maria. Thank you.